Welcome, everyone. I'm going to call the special meeting for Tuesday, September 20th, 2016 of the Ojai City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Lara.
Here.
Councilmember Haney.
Here.
Councilmember Clapp. Mayor Protem Wyrick.
Here.
Mayor Blatts.
Here. And I want to thank everybody in the audience for being here tonight, and I would ask if Mayor Protem Wyrick could lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready? Begin.
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have four discussion items this evening that were left over from last week's agenda, and rather than just adding them to next week's agenda, I decided we ought to call a special meeting so we could get through these in the least amount of time and not worry about burdening our agenda next week. So the first one is introduction of an ordinance adding Chapter 25 of Title IV to allow beekeeping with prescribed restrictions in all zones within the city of Ojai. Mr. McClary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The recommended action is to receive public comment on this item, and if council wishes to introduce the ordinance adding Chapter 25 to Title IV of the Ojai Municipal Code to allow beekeeping with prescribed restrictions in all zones in the city of Ojai, ask the city clerk to read the title of the ordinance and to weigh the reading in full and provide that the ordinance can only be read by title only, and direct the clerk to assign an ordinance number upon successful introduction. I'll turn it over to the city attorney, Matthew Summers, for the remainder of the report.
Okay, Mr. Summers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. McClary, what's before you is a draft ordinance that implements the term sheet presented to you and discussed by the council on April 26th. It is modeled on the ordinances from Santa Barbara, Santa Monica, and then Los Angeles that allow beekeeping in all zones to respond to the requests from local beekeeping enthusiasts and apiists to provide for beekeeping in the city, which is currently not a permitted land use. The approach would be to allow beekeeping citywide with several conditions. For the beekeepers themselves, they would require to keep the colonies in the movable frame hives, always have a water source, and provide adequate space in the hive to prevent overcrowding and hopefully to reduce aggressive bees. And colonies must be registered with the county's agricultural commissioner and comply with the state regulations regarding bee management and honey production. With regard to location and hive counts, no more than one hive on lots less than 5,000 square feet, no more than two on 10,000 square foot, and on lots larger than 10,000 square feet, two minimum, and then another, one more hive per additional 5,000 square feet of area. At least 20 feet setback from public streets or sidewalks to thoroughfares, four hives, and at least five foot setback from property lines and hive entrances should be directed away from the property line if they're within 20-foot setback of the property line. And a requirement for beekeepers to provide notice to the neighbors if they're going to install a bee hive within 100 feet of their property, ensuring that everybody's aware. But neighbors don't get a veto on the bees being put on by a property owner, it's just an opportunity to make sure they're aware that a hive is going to be moving in. And it's exempt from CEQA as a action under Section 15308 of the CEQA guidelines to protect the environment by promoting beekeeping, which ensures a greater availability of pollinators in promoting the region's agriculture and natural environment. There's no expected fiscal impact, and with that, I'm available for any questions.
Okay. Any questions of Mr. Summers? Comments of the council? No? Well, we've got lots of speakers cards, so I'm looking forward to hearing from the audience. Robert Meyer.
Thank you, City Council. Robert Meyer, 550 Buck Board. Obviously, I'm an enthusiast, got my shirt on. I'm not going to add a whole lot because I'm hoping that there's a lot of positive comments and support tonight for this ordinance. The only comment I would make is one item on there is a question of mine is whether it's necessary, which is the neighbor notification portion. You know, as Mr. Summers said, the neighbor doesn't get a vote, it's just notification, and I'm not sure what that would lead to potentially. Other things, like my neighbor has the within zoning to put horses, they didn't notify me that they brought horses in. I don't really care, but some people might. So that's one thing, if we wanted to, we could take that out, but it's, for me, it's not a big deal. I'm very supportive of the ordinance, I think it's a great thing, obviously, and I hope you all pass it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Klein.
Good evening, I'm Richard Klein, and I'm a 22-year resident of Miners Oaks and about a six-year member of the Bee Club, and I would highly suggest that you adopt these changes, they'd be incredibly helpful for the bees, lots more resources and opportunities for them to thrive, and I appreciate you taking up this matter.
I like your T-shirts. Glenn Perry.
We can make them available for you.
Yeah, really.
Thank you all for accepting consideration for this law and for the very artful, clear, and concise drafting of it, a really excellent job. I think it is good for Ojai in terms of its natural environment and also for its image in the county. It hasn't gone without note that this is the first town, hopefully not the last, in Ventura County to propose such a legislation, and I think Ojai will go down in Ventura County history with that as another plus for an environmentally proactive city. I also have some reservations about the provision of notification, though it's not the intention, and as you clarified, sir, that there's, it's not a matter of you decide, it's merely a matter of notification. On the other hand, neighborliness is a precious thing, and if I received such a notice, or if I received a notice, I intend to get a rottweiler, or another chihuahua, or whatever, my thought process or my reaction was, oh, do I agree with this? Is it something I'm in favor of? Do I have a say in it? And to me, that is a well-intentioned provision that is going to cause lots of problems, not with most people, but with enough people to keep lawyers busy on a random basis. So I would really advise that the rare possibility, or perhaps not so rare possibility, that it may cause more contention than harmony, I would really like that to be struck out of the condition. Also, the way it's worded is that it's not a notification to neighbors or residences within 100 feet, but to property owners within 100 feet, which implies, again, that there's property rights at stake here, and I think that would only add to the confusion. So with that, thank you so much for all the work that you've given. We have a few people here tonight, we have advised in general that people write to you, which I understand that some people have over the last several months in support of it, and so we've tried to keep our time in taking up your time at a minimum. Really appreciate this forward-looking legislation. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. Matt Jenkins.
Hello, my name is Matt Jenkins. I've lived in the valley my whole life, and some of my oldest memories are of my dad smoking the bees, and there's a lot of hive, there were a lot of hives around the valley, around the orchards and everything, and I wrote a lot of stuff here, all the benefits of the bees, you know, their pollinators, honey wax, propolis, and I think the big thing is it'll help build the community because it'll bring people together in this really positive hobby, you know, for backyard people, and thanks for considering it. You know, the bees, they really just need a little bit of space in front of the hive, some water, and they go about their business, you know, they do what they do, they pollinate and they get nectar, and they don't bother anybody unless, you know, they're bothered themselves, I guess, so. Yeah, anyway, thanks a lot. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you. Alicia Tharp.
Okay, I'm Alicia Tharp, valley resident for 25 years. I'm a beekeeper, Ojai Valley Bee Club member, appreciate your time and efforts with this, an important issue. I'm hoping these changes will take effect because that means my bees can move back to my backyard, which I truly miss having them there. We need to realize that urban areas are sanctuaries for bees. We have a lot more vegetation here, plants, flowers, nectar, pollen, bee food than in rural areas generally. There's water sources here, so cities are sanctuaries for bees. We need to have people here to manage them. Welcoming beekeepers into our community creates a hub of people that can manage them and sustain them and keep them going, and by allowing us to do this, we can sustain this very vital species. One last quick thing, there was talk about this being a valley-wide ordinance as opposed to city-only, I'm curious how that stands, because, you know, the city's kind of small space as opposed to the whole area. With that, that's all I got to say, just appreciate your time and efforts, and thank you.
Thank you, sure. Mayor Protem Wyrick.
I can respond on the valley issue. The city limits, as you know, are quite small. Then beyond that is a sphere of influence, which are areas that are the probable future boundaries of the city as perceived by an oversight agency called LAFCO, and Mr. Summers is going to correct me if I'm wrong. And then beyond that is an area of interest, which is the whole valley, which the city has some special role in in terms of providing input for certain types of land use planning and discretionary permits. So the answer is, we can only have direct jurisdiction inside our city limits, but we have more influence on the unincorporated area in the valley than just, than any other city would, I guess is the right way to say it. So it's a natural step to try to, if this works, then that becomes a model that will have influence on the valley, but it does not directly change the jurisdiction. It's something you can then go to the county with and say, look, they did it, it's working, why not do it, you know? So I hope that provides some kind of insight and for the future. Did I misspeak?
No, that's all correct, and I'll add that the council also has the bully pulpit power in terms of you have relationships with the county supervisors individually and as a city, that relationship can be leveraged to ensure that the county puts this on their agenda and at least evaluates a beekeeping ordinance, if not adopts it.
Okay. And if anybody wanted to do that, we would support that, okay? Susa Francina.
Susa Francina, 208 North Ventura Street. I too am very happy to see this ordinance, it's an important step toward making Ojai a model sustainable community. I have maybe a question that came up from someone who's a longtime beekeeper, and I did not have an opportunity to read this detail, but it seems very important, and maybe someone in the audience can comment. He wrote, "It is great that they are trying to allow backyard bee hives. I would suggest that they do away with the one hive per 5,000 feet. The bees do not take much space per hive, and it can be much harder to keep one hive alive versus two to three. The new beekeepers may not realize there are problems with their hive if they don't have another for reference. You can take bees from one hive that is thriving to help boost a weak hive, or eggs from a healthy hive to make a queen for a queenless hive. There are numerous advantages to having more than one hive." And he sent me a picture, and I can pass it around, it says, "You can see how little space these three bee hives take. I have them up against a fence, so their flight pattern goes up, and they don't fly straight out. These are literally three feet from my work van, and I have never been stung in my driveway." So I don't know if that's an important consideration, I just wanted to bring it up, and I also wanted to say, I hope you do take this before the county, because I remember Mr. Biggers in Miners Oaks, some of you might remember the bee man in Miners Oaks, he had that beard down to here, and he would put all the bees in his mouth. He even went on the Johnny Carson Show, and one crawled down his throat, and for a moment his eyes crossed, but it crawled back up. So these, so most of these fears about bees are, you know, nonexistent, once you understand them. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any other speakers cards, is there anyone else wishing to address us on that? No? Okay, then I'll bring it back to council for, oh, yeah, sure, come forward. If you could state your name, please.
Randy Levitt, 410 Tico.
Hi, Randy.
Hi. Been in the Bee Club maybe four years now, enjoy it thoroughly, got me interested in beekeeping now, it's one of my favorite hobbies to do, and really helps to support bee, you know, you know all the reasons, but there are so many of us in the Bee Club, it's, you know, how, how, how big is our list now, Glenn? How many people do we have?
200.
200 people, so, and growing.
Which are not beekeepers, but interested.
Interested, anyway, hope you, I hope we get this, thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Anybody else? All right, I'll bring it back to council for questions or comments. Mayor Protem Wyrick.
It's so rare that one gets an opportunity to provide, as was so eloquent, only put a sanctuary or haven for a stressed species because of human activity, and to be able to do something with a municipal code to help that species, it's such a rare opportunity. And in all the reading I've done about it, it's just, it's really a trend, and it's an important trend to start, to start in Ventura County if we can. With respect to the neighbor notification, I'm, I'm open to deleting that if my colleagues wish to, I understand their comments, but not at the price of failing to proceed tonight. And in terms of the point that Susa made on the spacing, this is pretty much modeled after a lot of other cities, I think we can always perhaps change that, but we need to change with the, we need to start with the density, I think, that's specified. So for purposes of discussion, all right, and open to a friendly amendment, I'm going to move that we pass the, that move that we introduce the ordinance adding a new Chapter 25, Title IV of the Ojai Municipal Code to allow beekeeping in all zones with this amendment of deleting the neighbor notification, but I'm, I'm open to amendment on that.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay. Any other discussion on the item?
I would just like to, Mayor, I'd just like to touch on the notification. You know, it's probably the biggest issue for me on this is the fact that, you know, as a high school football coach, we carried, is it Epion? Yeah, in our, on the field with us 24/7, and there's just a lot of children that have bee allergies, and adults too. That, that's what's behind notification for me, is, is the fact that if you have this and a child or adult has an issue, that's my only concern with it, is at least there's an understanding that, yes, you can have it, but yes, I know it's there.
Well, and I'll invite amendment to my motion.
Well, I amend that we keep the.
I'll accept that amendment.
Okay. Is there another second?
A second.
Okay. Further discussion?
I just want to make a comment before we, we vote, that I appreciate the public working with us, and, and I agree with Mayor Protem Wyrick's comments about it's rare for us to help a species. I, I, I'm a landscape contractor, I'm more of a maintenance, I'm not a masonry like my colleague is, and we appreciate bees, and knock on wood, to this day, we have not gone stung by any honeybees, but we have gone stung by yellow jackets many times, and so that's completely different, but I, I'm supportive of this ordinance, I see the benefit to, to the plants, to us, to just the environment in general, so I appreciate your support.
All right, any other comments?
I just want to say that I'm very much behind this ordinance. I think that there's an opportunity here for us, once again, to kind of be in the forefront of issues or, or the leading edge on topics that somehow people finally come in behind us, like we did when we banned plastic bags and things like that, and then all of a sudden they came behind us, and I think this is a, it's the way we kind of do it in Ojai, and I really think that the bees and within the city limits is a, is something that really fits into our character very well. So I'm going to ask for a roll call, please.
Councilmember Lara.
Yes.
Councilmember Haney.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wyrick.
Finally, yes.
Mayor Blatts.
Yes. All right, you're all set.
Congratulations.
Good luck. Thank you.
And, Mr. Mayor, this will come back to the council for second reading, not at your next meeting, because that's not 10 days from now, it's the first meeting in October.
Okay, all right.
Thanks again, everyone, for educating us.
If anyone, you know, that was here just for that item wants to leave, you're welcome to do so before I start this next item.
Third chance to charm.
You're welcome.
Thanks for putting it first.
Yeah.
The cookies are good, too.
Okay, good. All right, item number two is agreement for Building and Safety Services. Mr. McClary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item is back, obviously, we did not get to it at the last regular meeting. We had previously taken this to council, at which time we, we had conducted the interviews, but we had not had an opportunity to reach out to the firm that was the preferred firm as identified by the interview committee, we had not had a chance to reach out to them and negotiate an agreement. We have since been able to do that, and I'm happy to go through the details of that tonight. The recommended action is to, before we get to actually authorizing the city manager to sign an agreement, we have a couple of options that we'd like the city council to weigh in on. One would be if the city council wishes to include a fire safety, this is the optional element P in the agreement, we'll talk about that a little bit further later. Also asking if the council wishes to include optional element M, which would be the addition of the Building and Safety Code Compliance Officer as part of the agreement. Staff recommends utilizing a junior code enforcement officer option, which is provided as attachment F to your staff report. We're recommending this option at a cost not to exceed $42,000 per year. This would be the additional code compliance officer above and beyond the typical building and safety duties that are handled by the department. This would be an individual who would be specifically dedicated to enforcing the city's codes, didn't have to do with building or life safety issues, like their primary focus would be issues such as short-term rental enforcement, or signage, or illegal construction activity, that type of, that's what that individual would focus on. Also, as part of that recommendation, that if the council would like to take the optional element M, again, at a cost not to exceed $42,000 per year is the recommended funding allocation, and also includes standard contractual language that would cap the amount, require the contractor to notify the city prior to exceeding 80% of the annual cap. This is standard language that we have in our professional services agreement that would, would be provided by Mr. Summers' office. And then lastly, if the city council agrees, our recommendation would be to authorize the city manager to sign a professional services agreement with Charles Abbott Associates Incorporated, and provide direction to staff on the optional elements. I do want to note that Greg Robinson, who is the regional director for Charles Abbott Associates, is here in the audience this evening and is available to answer any questions that you may have. So as you probably recall, the process to, to a request for proposals began back in 2015, and it was put on the back burner for a while, and then it was revived not long after I became the interim city manager. We received responses from three firms, and the committee, as we stated at the, I believe it was the August 23rd meeting, the committee consisted of myself, an individual, a retired community development director from the city of Port Juanimi, Mr. Greg Brown, and two members of council, Mayor Protem Wyrick and Councilmember Randy Haney. And after conducting the interviews, the committee agreed that Charles Abbott Associates be the recommended firm, and as I stated, we have since negotiated a contract, a draft contract with them. One thing that I want to note that came out in the negotiations with Mr. Robinson, as we talked about the billing and the fee schedule, and I'll turn your attention to attachment F to the staff report, the original proposal called that they would receive 65% of monthly fees collected for a plan check. We have put a cap on that, so to speak, so that once the billings reach $30,000 per month, that remaining split of fees would only be billed out at 50%. So if there's a heavy month with some high valuation, the city would be able to retain a little bit more of the, the permit fees, which we feel is fair not only to the city but also to the contractor, because obviously, as the fees go up, there's, the, the level of work tends to proportionally, you know, more fees, less work to get it done. So again, at 30,000 or above, we would only be looking at paying 50% out. And then also on that attachment, you can see that we, that they have provided an additional option, the, the original proposal had a code enforcement officer at an hourly rate of $75 per hour. If we were to go at that rate, we could legitimately hire on a full-time individual at that rate, but we, I feel, and Charles Abbott feels, that the level of service that we're looking for and the job duties that are to be performed would be commensurate with somebody of a junior code enforcement officer position, and we're able to negotiate that rate down to $50 an hour. My proposal would be that we would bring that person on for an average of 16 hours a week at the cost not to exceed $42,000 per year. Should touch a little bit on at this point, and I'm happy to answer any questions at any point, talk about, a little bit about optional element P, which is the fire safety We had had some very good discussions, I think, with the county fire staff, including the fire marshal, regarding how we can possibly get some improved services to the citizens of Ojai. And part of those discussions, we have learned that the county has office hours that are available for folks, so that they can get plan check services at the government center, they do not have to travel all the way to Camarillo. We also learned that they are working on implementing a new software system and tracking system that will allow people to actually file electronically and remotely. So I don't want to speak for the Mayor Protem, but I think the, we felt through that conversation that the county was making, I think, some really good strides in terms of the customer service in this area, and I think our recommendation at this point would be that we include the fire safety element in there, but that we not go forward and try to implement any of that at this point, pending how we see things working out with the county fire and how we're able to address the, the concerns of the Ojai residents. So do you have anything you would like to add to that, Mayor Protem?
No, I would say that mirrors my feelings, I was extremely happy with the conversation and the education in terms of the investment that the county has made to improve customer service and how we can be able to handshake that, but I think it is appropriate to maintain the option but not implement pending how all that works out, and because our primary focus here needs to be to improve services to our constituents, and if we, that's what this was all about to begin with, and if we don't have to implement it, then we don't have to implement it to achieve that goal. If I could take a privilege of asking about some of the other optional elements, with your permission, Mayor?
Go ahead, sure.
I, with respect to N and O, was there a staff recommendation on optional element N, as in never, and O certification?
Oh, yes. Bear with me just a moment here.
I didn't see one way or the other.
The N is the accessibility, and that is to provide expertise in regards to accessibility issues, including an accessible and implementation plan for public facilities. I- Uh, I believe Mr. Robinson could confirm this, uh, their, their staff is, uh, fully certified, and they are able to provide that, um, so I think it'd be safe to say that if that is something that is desired by the city, that that is an, uh, a service that Charles Abbott could provide to us. Mr. Robinson, anything you'd like to add?
Greg Robinson, Charles Abbott Associates, Mayor, Council. Yeah, we've done, uh, we've done reports for other cities, uh, for ADA compliance, so that's, we have the expertise to do that.
Are we saying that's built, would be built in, that access to that expertise is built in without having exercised that optional element?
It's, well, we're, we're, yeah.
Should we exercise that optional element?
It would probably be, probably a separate, uh, kind of a cost to, yeah, yeah.
It's, it's, it's kind of like all the optional elements, you, you have the ability to, once they're in the contract, you can use them if you need them.
Sure, correct.
But you don't have to use them, right?
That's correct, right.
Okay. And then the other one with the certification of the code compliance officer?
I believe all your code compliance officers are certified, is that correct?
Correct.
Mr. Robinson?
So that would be part of an option. And then the last question, and I promise I'll be quiet, is, I, the chain of command for the junior code enforcement officer to the, goes to the building official to the city manager?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay. I, while you're up here, I have one question.
Okay.
We're talking about this junior building, uh, code enforcement officer principally spending a lot of time enforcing our short-term rental ordinance. What kind of, uh, I'm very interested in knowing what kind of history, what kind of, uh, experience your firm has, and specifically who, how much experience a junior code enforcement officer will have in doing compliance of the code that we now have in place to enforce the, uh, short-term rentals.
Well, a junior would be someone with not a lot of experience, but if something's, something is more difficulty, then we'd have an experienced person help out with that. And like I've talked to, uh, uh, city manager before, think, if that's a training issue with, because a person hasn't had experience with that, that'd be no charge, we wouldn't charge the higher rate, because that's something that person should have the capability of doing. So if some of the billing official could help out, or if we need to bring somebody else and, uh, to get the program started, we would, we'd do that to make sure that the people are qualified to do the job.
And then as a general question, not, not specific as to the code enforcement officer, but to your firm itself and the building official, what kind of success rate or what kind of experience do you have in enforcing, um, violations of short-term rentals?
Well, success rate per stage, I, I can't give that to you off the top of my head. Uh, we've, we've done it in, uh, a couple cities, but.
Okay, but what I'm getting at is this is, this is one of the, the biggest issues, I think, in terms of our, our enforcement against short-term rentals, is how are we going to do it? And I want to make sure that if we're including this in a contract, that we are getting a firm specifically that has some expertise in how to go about doing it, and we're not trying to reinvent the wheel with them.
If, if I could, I, I think, um, this answer is, or this matter is probably best addressed in terms of, as you work through a process, you, you learn things. And I would say as we have worked through this process of the short-term rental enforcement, we initially started going about it trying to use our, our in-house code compliance persons. And I think as we have worked through this process, we are finding it is a, a different animal, uh, and requires a different, uh, different approach. It's not so, it's, it, it, it doesn't quite mirror, I think, some of the other code enforcement activities in terms of, you know, responding to, uh, although obviously we do get complaints, but a lot of it is more, um, computer work and, and that type of work, um, going through databases and, um, you know, trying to check up different information to see that it can match up. Uh, a lot of it, in other words, has become, quite frankly, desk work and, and kind of stuff that kind of goes on in the back office, because a lot of it, at least, with our current enforcement efforts, is based on what we're seeing on the internet, uh, and then, of course, responding to complaints as well. But as you well know, when you get a complaint about a short-term rental, simply just rolling up on the scene and seeing, you know, vehicles or vehicles, even if they have out-of-state license plates or something like that, you know, that's not enough for us to be able to go forward with the violation. So it's a lot of, uh, quote-unquote detective work that needs to be done. What we would do would, we would work with Charles Abbott, um, I think to use the code compliance officer as a way to respond to some of those complaints and, and be able to get out and verify, photograph, document issues that are going on out there, and then my recommendation would be that they probably can, still continue to then turn that over, um, to the folks that we have on staff who are kind of working that through the back room. That may change and evolve over time. What we haven't been able to do much with the code enforcement position over the last six months or the year has been able to go out and focus on those other issues, uh, that I mentioned. So I think we've got the short-term rental pretty well in hand at this point in terms of being able to address it, um, and then we would work with Charles Abbott going forward and see how we can really work that out.
And this would include the, the prohibition against advertising?
Correct.
Okay. Councilman Lara?
And along those lines of the junior, uh, code enforcement, uh, services, I have, we, in, in your previous, um, application, you described the services that a code enforcement, uh, has in your, in your, um, company. Could you give us a quick synopsis of, of what's included in the junior code enforcement service?
It'd be the same. It'd virtually be the, be the same, it's just he may not have some expertise in some of the items.
Okay, because it's, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty comprehensive. I mean, it's updating the city patrol plan and patrol, uh, um, corporate boundaries to interpretation application of related laws, ordinance, regulations. I mean, it's pretty comprehensive, the services.
Right, and some of that stuff will probably be done by the billing official, who's, who's, uh, who's also done code enforcement in, in the past. For LA County, for five years, so a lot of the stuff. We, we're kind of a, we're more of a team, it's like we don't have a person that does this, a person that does, we operate as a, as an organization, as an organization, as a team. And if, we can't, we don't have the folks out here for some specific to handle it, we have folks all over Southern California that can help us to do things, so. I think, once we look at the programs, what needs to be set up, what the city has currently, and if any improvements need to be made, we'll, we'll make adjustments, you know, per city manager as required.
Okay. Steve, hi, uh, Mayor, I have one question. Mayor Protem, Haney, or, excuse me, Councilman Haney.
Steve, on our, uh, our last contractor, Mr. Stewart, was most of his fees a flat rate? $75 or $85 an hour?
Uh, there was.
Did he have a variable set of?
There was a flat rate, and there was also a, a percentage of the plan check fees that were also collected as well.
Right, but they're pretty much a flat rate fee. This is my only concern, and I, I know I voiced this in the committee, um, and, um, it's this, uh, it's fee creep rather than mission creep. And fee creep is the fact that, um, we say we're going to do something now, and then down the road, we may need to bring in someone with a little more expertise, and that person's expertise is rated at this much more an hour. So my concern is, in the past, we had a flat fee no matter what, and with your company, there's, um, a fee rate of anywhere from, you know, 100 and something, 75, 180, down to your junior rate. That's just my concern, is that we don't lock this in at a specific fee, that, that we're going to get fee creep, and, and it's just, it's just a concern of mine. So I don't know how you can make me feel better about that.
What I can do is say that anything related to building and safety items is going to be covered under that percentage of fees. There's no, there's no additional cost. I mean, if I have to come out here, if I have to bring a structural engineer to take a look at something, you know, uh, it's all covered. That's your billing apartment cost. That's the billing apartment cost.
Okay.
That's not Renee or a billing official or a billing inspector, that's not their costs, it's your whole concept of billing apartment. Code enforcement would be separate, uh, if we have to do ADA compliance, that's, that's, that's a separate items, services we provide in addition to. The hourly rates is a standard rate we give, for some reason the city would want us to do something outside the scope of the billing apartment.
Right. Well, like you said, in the past, our past contractor, all of those, even ADA compliance, was that a set fee? Was that in their building and safety, um, fee?
Well, I don't know, I'm, I guess I'm kind of confused with ADA compliance, what we're talking about, because I'm thinking of, of, uh, you know, transition report, which is.
How about this, if you have to bring a grading inju-, um, a, a, a person that's a spec-, that's a specialist in grading, would that be an additional fee outside of the standard building and safety fee?
If we're collecting a fee for grading, no, that's all covered.
Okay.
And if we have to review disabled access as part of plan review, that's all covered. If we're doing a special report, let's say the city wants to upgrade this building, and they want to know what, what the requirements are to upgrade this building, the costs involved, now that would be something which would be a separate proposal, something to be approved by, by the city. But if, if we're plan checking this building, you know, or plan checking, you know, a building downtown which has got some disabled access issues, that's just part of being a billing apartment. That's what we do.
Thank you. Um, Stephen, I just have one, one last question regarding our past, uh, building code official, a building officer official. Um, how many hours was he working?
It depended, depended on the workload and, um.
Did we, so we didn't have him on a part-time basis like we're trying to, to do with Mr. Abbott's, uh, contract? I think you just said 15 hours a week, is that, is that what I'm hearing? So would, so in other words, in the past, if we needed a building official, if we needed a, and?
I think we've got some confused issues here. The code compliance officer was not through Mr. Stewart's firm, that was an employee of the city.
I understand that.
Yeah.
And how many hours was he working a week?
That was 30, that was, that was 30 hours a week. I misunderstood, I thought you were speaking about Mr. Stewart.
No, I'm sorry. And so, again, now we're looking at asking Mr. Abbott to perform the same type of service, but we're asking him to do it at 15 hours a week, am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so I guess I'm lost on, and if we did it in-house and we needed 30 hours, how do we need?
I don't think we needed 30 hours.
You don't think we needed?
I don't think, yeah, I don't. I, I, I think you got to measure it going forward in terms of what we're going to get, bang for our buck.
Okay.
And that's why I'm recommending it at the 16 hours. I, if I could, Mr. Robinson, could you explain a little bit about your, how your, um, your fees are structured and how you provide staffing to the city? Because one of the things that we understood in the interviews was that you will provide staffing at the building and safety counter if people come in or they have questions, but we won't be paying an hourly rate for that person?
Absolutely, we're just, okay, it goes back to the focus of, of the billing apartment. Let's, so we have some, we have set, we just count our hours, which is in the contract, which, which we have, but kind of the key is, is that, depending upon the people we have, is that, you know, if, if workload increases, or let's say, uh, developer comes in and needs a special meeting or what have, it's all covered in the cost, because we'd be doing that if we're a regular billing apartment in a, in a large city. Just because it's a smaller city, we still provide the same absolute service as you get as a large city. You know, that doesn't mean, that's why we don't commit our people to eight hours a day, or six hours a day, or, or what have you. Of all of a sudden, you have some uptick in development, we'll bring in another inspector in. We aren't, because we'll, because of the percentage of fees, we will be collecting more fees, so we can return that in service. It's, I, I guess I might have explained it very well, but.
No, no, you're fine, you're, you're fine.
But, you know, it's like, I hate to use other cities' example, but let's say like the city of Camarillo, during the recession, we were down to, uh, revenues were, you know, a fifth of what they were during the uptick. Of course, you have, we have to provide the minimum service, so we're very minimum service, but when the uptick came, we had, we had additional five people because of the, when the economy's booming. So we can fluctuate the workload, depending upon what, what's, what the demand is, and that's.
Okay. Any other questions? No? Thank you, sir. We have one speaker's card, Mr. Quillisi.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. Steve Quillisi, I'm a resident of the city. I would urge you to include options M, N, O, and P in the contract. With regard to M, um, we have seen some issues trying to keep a part-time code compliance officer working here. It's something you're getting as a, a solid offer from this consulting firm, and that's going to be a lot easier for the city to manage, I think, than trying to hire a part-time person. As far as N, it sounds like you're already getting it, might as well leave it in the, might as well put it in the contract, it doesn't sound like it costs anything more because people are qualified. Uh, same with O, you have the qualifications there, the certifications. It's a no-cost option, if you will. With regard to option P, first thing we have to keep in mind is that we must have fire checks done by appropriately trained personnel and certified personnel, no question about that. That said, my philosophy is the best work is done closest to the people involved, and for me, that means doing it here within City Hall, if we can, rather than shipping electrons or paper or people to somewhere far away, and I would bet, in the end, it will be less expensive for the res-, for the residents of the city as well. So I would urge you to put all four options in the contract. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Quillisi. Anyone else wanting to address us on this? No? All right, I'll bring you back to council for further discussion.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just make one further comment, just wanted to note that we have been working with Charles Abbott and Associates under an interim agreement, uh, since the beginning of the month. Uh, we have found their service to be excellent, uh, very responsive, and I think everybody on staff has found them to be very pleasant and very professional and easy to work with.
Thank you. All right, any other discussion, or I'll entertain a motion?
I have a quick question.
Yes.
Well, first, an opinion, I'm going to, whoever makes a motion, I'll, I'll be hoping, looking for one that includes all four options as well. On page nine, I mean, item nine, agreement administrator, attachment E, page five of fif-, 14, in the September 13, um, the last packet, there's language there I need to make sure I'm clear about. You know, I think I've already gone through why I think it's consistent with the code, municipal code of the city, for the building official to be at the status of department head, I've cited those before. And in the second sentence, where it's, I think this is where, where this addresses who the building official respa-, uh, answers to, and, um, the second sentence, city reserves the right to change this designation upon written notice to the consultant. I personally would like that not to be able to be changed without the consent of council. Am I making myself clear? I was wondering if the staff response to that is. In other words, the point being is that it's, uh, important as an organizational issue to me, as I read the code, as I think about organizational, uh, appropriate organizational structure, and I, that the, uh, that we've set this up with the building official answering to the city manager. And I wouldn't want the city manager to be able to change that without getting the consent of council.
Any other thoughts with that regard from the council? The other, uh, thought would be that that's the responsibility of the city manager, and the city manager should have full authority to do that. So I'm not saying one way or the other, but.
Yeah, and that's the other point of.
That's the opposite side of the coin.
Yeah, and my, my feeling about that, it's an organizational, it's an accountability issue. In other words, uh, and a organizational structural issue, um, which, uh, I think is council purview, and I'm not, I'm not saying it couldn't be changed, but that it couldn't be changed without the consent of council.
I understand exactly where you're coming from, so don't think I'm trying to argue against that point. I clearly understand what the intent is and where you're going. I always try to think forward in terms of flexibility and, you know, not, and I, we don't want to paint ourselves into a corner, so to speak, so. I guess on one hand, I'm thinking out loud here, which is always dangerous, I mean, to a certain extent, you've, you've made it very clear to the city manager that they are to be the person who's administering this agreement. So to a certain extent, you could say that would be a, a performance evaluation issue. I guess the second thing then that leaps into mind would be, you know, if for some reason the city manager was unavailable, or had to make a designee, or was, you know, otherwise, you know, that would be how it would typically work in, in the city structure, would be, you know, I have the authority as the interim city manager, but if for some reason I am not able to act or be there that I could designate. reason I am not able to act or be there, that I could designate another person to be able to do that.
Absolutely.
Now, obviously, though...
Which is not really my, what I was...
Yeah, I understand that, too. So, that would be my only response back, would be, does that, could that, could we possibly tie our hands in the future here? But I understand the concern, and I don't have any particular issue with locking that in, if that's what the council really desires.
Again, I'm not trying to lock it in, I'm just saying that it wouldn't be changed, it wouldn't be changed without council consent.
Any thoughts, Commissioner Lara?
And that doesn't mean a designee, that's a different matter.
It is an agreement, and I think that it falls into the purview of the city manager. I think we might be, with that language, we might be, might have unintended consequences. I think that we could do that through the evaluation structure of the city manager, do it that way. Again, since this is an idea just proposed on the dais, I haven't had time to fully think about it, but my gut feeling says that we might be, we might be creating more of a restraint, and we could evaluate him during his city manager valuations and give him that feedback there.
Well, one of my responses to that, if I may, is that this was very specific in terms of how we designed the RFP, very specific. So, I wouldn't want to have the agreement undermine the very specific element of the RFP.
One other thing I'd just bring up, and maybe you can help me here, Matthew. The language is, to me, it's clear, but with this discussion going on, it's a bit ambiguous. Because it says, "The city reserves the right." Well, the city is really the city council.
Right.
Okay? So, it doesn't say the city manager reserves the right.
That's true.
Okay?
And if city means council, then I'm fine.
Yeah, and I really believe that that's what the intent is, the city is entering into this agreement, not the city manager, we're giving him the authority to sign it.
Well, if that's implied, then...
Yeah. I think that with it saying the city reserves the right, that implies it's the city council reserves the right.
Does council agree with that?
That is correct, and whenever a contract like this says "city," it always means the council.
Okay.
Or if the council delegates that power, the city manager. And to some extent, the city manager has always delegated that power by the code, which allows him to administer contracts. But here, council's direction, as built into your motion, may be clear, don't change that piece.
I stand corrected, then.
But as I read it, the language is broad enough, as you described, city means the city as the city itself decides, as the council decides.
Okay. Any other comments?
My only concern in this, Mayor, is, you know, I agree with William a hundred percent. To me, it just comes down to accountability. I'd like the building and safety official to sit in the same staff meetings with all of the division heads, so that he or she is receiving all the information that is pertinent to them to do their job to the best of their ability, and I'd rather see that communication be firsthand rather than secondhand. That's my take on this. That's the only reason that I'd like to, the wording here is whatever we agree on. But having the building and safety official, along with Kathleen Wold, along with Greg Grant, and along with your other staff members, Rudy, I just think it's important that they're getting all the information in regards to what's going on in our community firsthand. That's where I'm at on this.
Is that the, I don't get that intent out of this one paragraph, so I'm just wondering, is that, is that your underst... If the building official reports to the city manager, and the building official is a contractor of the city, is it our intention that that would include them in staff meetings?
I think ultimately, that needs to be the decision of the city manager. However, having heard the comments of the council member, I don't necessarily disagree with that, but I would still say my first statement still stands.
Okay. You all right with that?
Yeah, like you said, I can understand that there's going to be some things regarding official business that maybe the contract employee should not be, should not have knowledge of, and I think you can conduct your business in any manner that allows that individual to be there until he's not, he or she is not needed, and then they can leave the room and you can conduct any other type of business that you need to. Again, my goal is that the individual is hearing the needs of the community directly from the city manager.
Absolutely, I understand and agree.
I totally agree. Okay? Any further comments?
I have another question for Staffing Cars, City Junior Enforcement Officer. I'm not fully convinced, I don't know if it's a right approach. But you said we need to try this out, we need to see how this all evolves, and we heard a good comment by one of our speakers about providing this option because we've had a difficult time retaining the part-time staff code officers, which is a good point, but you said that if we need to tweak it, what, how, how do you plan to evaluate the junior code enforcement officer position?
I may have not been very clear in my comments, I think I was, I believe I was speaking specifically about the short-term rental enforcement issue and how we kind of work that out. Because again, the short-term rental enforcement I see as a highly specialized type of enforcement. We currently have a consulting firm that's doing that work, and so, if the council approved this element, I would sit down with them, with Charles Abbott, and then make some decisions myself in terms of how we can best approach this going forward. I don't think the council would want to see the code compliance officer spending all their time out there on short-term rentals, and since we do have somebody else identified who's at least leading the charge on that right now, I think a lot of it may just depend on, you know, the ebb and the flow in terms of what the need is out there. We may, a year from now, we may find that there's not much need for short-term rental enforcement, or that it's been greatly diminished, in which case, we would be able to start ramping back up towards some of the other things that we've not been able to address. And then, and that's been such a scenario like that, we would be able to reduce the hours of the consulting firm that's doing the short-term rental enforcement for us. So, it's, I do agree, it's a little vague in terms of the actual mix of that, but that's how we would approach it.
I mean, I, another concern that comes into mind about the junior code enforcement officer is the fact that we've had issues in the past with our code enforcement officer and their interaction with the public.
Well, I think Mr. Quilisi's comments are right to the point. I mean, you know, finding, you know, you need somebody who has experience, who, you know, perhaps has the, you know, right kind of credentials and training. You know, it's not always easy to find an individual like that who's willing to come in and work on a part-time basis. I think that's one of the advantages to going with a firm like Charles Abbott, they've got some depth. If a particular individual is ill or needs to take a leave, they would be able to have somebody who could come in and pick up that work at the same level of expertise as the previous person. Obviously, we want to keep the same person here because of familiarity.
And touching on the level of expertise, that's what, that's my main point, is are we getting somebody that's not qualified enough to provide that service to the best of their ability? Because we want somebody that has a lot of skills, a lot of knowledge on code enforcement. I felt like we needed somebody that gives us that higher service of knowledge in terms of being able to...
I think this is where the team approach really comes back to benefit the city. We did not have that before, we had, you know, different pieces that we were trying to work together, and I think we'll see more of a seamless effort coming from Charles Abbott. The junior code compliance officer would work with the building official or somebody else on their staff if they weren't sure how to approach something, or, you know, how particularly, what might be a good enforcement approach. And they'll work with them, obviously, to make sure that we're doing all the correct legal steps and notification steps, as well as making sure that that person conducts themselves properly in the field.
Okay. Well, that's more of a peace of mind for me, knowing that it's going to be more of a teamwork. It just, in my head, I thought it was just going to be one person, it was going to be a junior level, step down to somebody that has more knowledge, and now that you're mentioning it's going to be more of a team, I could, I could, I could go with that.
Anything further? Anyone else? No? Then I'll entertain a motion. Yes, sure, come forward. Good evening, thanks for being here.
Good evening, Mayor Blatts and members of the council. For the record, my name is Masood Araghi, Fire Marshal with Ventura County Fire Protection District. I just want to clarify one item here on that optional element P, and that is, it talks about fire safety, and it's probably, it's good to define what that means, and I'm happy to see that actually, Mr. Summers has provided the legal opinion correctly, that that fire safety element is referred to plan reviews of single-family, one- and two-family dwellings. All other matters of the fire safety is still under the jurisdiction of the Fire Protection District, I just want to make sure that's clear. If that element ever is put in place, it will create some sort of discrepancies, because they do have to come to here for plan review, but they still have the inspections and other services that needs to be conducted by the district.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks for your time.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Consultations with this.
Absolutely, I had a great meeting with you guys, and I thank you so much.
Thank you.
Glad to help.
Thank you. Really appreciate it.
Anything further, then I'll entertain a motion.
I'll offer a motion to approve the agreement for building and safety services exercising options M, N, O, P, specifically at the discretion of the city manager. Sumoed.
Second. Any further discussion?
I just want to make a comment to the interview panel. I reviewed all the contracts that you guys had, and by far, I thought this was the best contract. I met all the evaluation criterias, all the certifications, the license, I've read all the personnel's background, and it was just, I couldn't agree with your recommendations tonight, so I want to thank you guys for doing such a great job.
Thank you for serving on that committee. Your work's greatly appreciated. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Lara?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wirik?
Yes.
Mayor Blatts?
Yes. All right, thank you. Moving on to item number three, is fiscal year 2016-17 budget discussion updating and amending the salary schedules for management and non-management employees, updating the employee handbook, modifying the standard work hours, and schedule for all full-time employees amendments to the fiscal year 2016-17 budget. Is this going to be Mr. Livingston?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll turn it over to our Finance Director, Rudy Livingston, for the remainder of the report.
Good evening, Mr. Livingston.
Good evening, it's good to be with you here, and finally, glad we're finally able to get together and address these issues tonight. It's been a long time in coming, I know the council's schedule has been incredibly busy, and it's been very, very tiresome, so I'm very happy to be here tonight. We have, there are several different parts of what we're here to look at, and I'm not sure, well, I guess we can start with the, with the updates to the employee handbook. We, over the past year, Mr. McLaren and I have looked at several items in the employee handbook and come to a decision that there's, some of the stuff is outdated and was inaccurate and needed to be changed, and so therefore, we brought these items forward. Some of these items, none of these were in anticipation of the other item that's before us this evening for the forty-hour work week changes. So, we were looking at this with regards to, most of the employee handbook was written referencing thirty-six-hour employees for the most part. And over the course of the last several years, there's been a shift toward having significantly more forty-hour employees rather than thirty-six hours, and so we felt that it was time to address that and to change the handbook accordingly. So, we made changes in there, what we have in the packet that is actually a strike-through, you know, showing all the revisions that we made, were proposing to this handbook here, and some of them are just grammatical and typographical type things, but the most of those relate to changing from a thirty-six to an hour, forty-hour work week. And now that we're anticipating going that way, we can even, we could probably even revise, should probably revise the manual a little bit further, and actually, if the council decides that they want to have a forty-hour work week, perhaps even eliminate the references to a thirty-six-hour work week in here. So, I don't, I don't have any specific items in this handbook that I wanted to bring up other than that's the general overall gist. There were some issues in here related to vacation days that were, you know, awarded. We referenced the limitations on vacation, for instance, as a number of days when we had nine hour, we had people working nine hours and other people working eight hours, so we changed those to being the actual hours that we can accumulate throughout the year. We changed the number of days that people receive for, the numbers, we referenced the number of hours specifically that an employee will receive for holidays rather than saying a day. And those are the type of items that are in here, we changed a little bit of language in here, we didn't have anything addressing comp time previously. We had issues regarding, we have language in here regarding vacation, or excuse me, overtime, but not comp time. And in our operation here, a lot of, we use comp time rather than overtime in a lot of cases. And so, it was important to bring that in to the manual. We, let's see, there was one item in here that was actually not changed, council had changed a couple of years ago, and it did not make it into a revision in the handbook regarding administrative leave. I'm just looking through this real quick again here. I believe that pretty much are the major issues that we had, the changes, and so we felt that it was appropriate.
Who did the admin leave, is in section four, point one-one?
Okay.
And the comp time was in section four, point nine, point one?
Yes.
Is there a cap on comp time in this?
There really isn't a cap on comp time, and what the comp time is, is in lieu of, you know, paying out overtime, so we don't have a cap on what the comp time is. But we don't want people accumulating comp time forever, the goal is to make people, to have people's schedules match what their work requirements are, so that they're not having significant amounts.
That's just a question.
Yeah, and maybe, should there...
Some policy handbooks, some human resources structures do have caps on comp time, just to kind of force department heads to do just what you said.
Exactly. Yeah, and I would totally, you know, if council desires that that's what should be there, I would support that.
Well, one thing just to note, as part of the discussion, that comp time is leave time, that I know, it says should be utilized within the fiscal year, but don't we pay it out at the end of the fiscal year?
It's been rolling forward.
It has been rolling forward.
That's the issue, if it's cumulative.
And that's the issue.
Well, then, we're to pay it out at the end of employment, at the end of the fiscal year.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we could put a cap, we wouldn't have a problem with that.
Yeah.
Suggest one? Or maybe not to make it cumulative, maybe, or something.
Yeah.
Looking for guidance from you guys.
Yeah, you know, I hadn't thought about a cap, and what we...
Do you have any ADA off the top of your head, how, what people are typically caring for balances on that? I don't think they're too high.
Most of them aren't, and we actually have a policy, right, that was enacted several years, about four years ago, where there's an ordering of the way that leave time is used, and unless an employee is within two pay periods of their maxing out on their vacation, they're required to take their comp time before they take their vacation time. But, you know, if, I don't think you should, in reality, probably it shouldn't be more than like, maybe about ninety-six hours or a hundred hours roughly in that neighborhood.
I just think it's good practice to have some sort of limit.
Yeah, I think so, too. I mean, you get to a point where that people have so much comp time, where they can't take the time off, they can't take the vacation time off, and we're so busy, it's a real, it's a real difficult thing.
I used to have a human resources department answer to me, so I know exactly...
You know, about it.
What can happen.
Yeah, exactly, and that's a good point. I didn't consider that when we were writing this up.
Well, I just wanted to clarify the word comp time, it's an exchange.
Yes.
And then I hear that we're going to pay them, so I'm a little lost on this. If comp is an exchange of, I'm going to call it energy, okay, that energy should be used up in a reasonable amount of time, and comp time should not be compensated for. I don't, you know...
I don't, you know, I don't know...
We, we can't have people work and not pay them for the hours that they work. That's the issue there.
No, what we're doing is we're exchanging someone not being paid time and a half or overtime for a comp time.
Correct.
So what I'm trying to say is that's, that's a give and take between an employee and an employer. And the idea is that time is not accrued so it can be compensated at the end of the year or the end of their employment. That, the whole idea behind comp time is, I'm working with you, you work with me. I need to stay an hour over. I have an emergency. Friday, I want you to adjust that hour off. Or by the end of the pay period, I want that time adjusted off. And you, as a manager, have to, to work with that, work with that condition. Right now, I'm just hearing that we can, we can address comp time. It's just this unending journey into not having to pay someone time and a half or overtime.
No, that's not, that's not...
I'm just, I'm throwing it out as part of the discussion.
I understand, I understand the concern. There's an answer to it. Rudy, could you explain the priority that we gave in terms of the use of the accumulated time off?
Yeah, and just so you know, comp time accrues either at straight time or at time and a half, depending on circumstances, on hours worked during the period. Okay, and, and we, an employee accrues comp time instead of overtime. And they, and they are, the expectation is that they would take time off in, at a, at either, you know, right away or shortly thereafter. Sometimes there's work circumstances where we are so overloaded with work that we're not able to, to get rid of that comp time in a timely manner. So we have, we have instituted this, this formula and I'm trying to remember exactly off the top of my head because I don't have it here with me. But the first priority is that we, we have to take holiday, unused holiday time, which would be banked holiday for, you know, we have 12 holiday per year. So we would use our, we would use our banked holidays or holiday time first. Then we would use our comp time second, and we would use our administrative leave time before we get to our over, to our vacation time. So the vacation time would continue to accrue on, but if an employee is gone and out of the office, then they would use, they would use the comp time and reduce that balance. Ideally, there would be no balance in there. And some cities that I've worked for, they actually require that it's, you know, that it's paid out, I mean, that you have to use it up within 30 days. Some of them have had an annual cap and says that if you, if you are at this certain level, you have to be paid out at the end of the year so the employee is not prejudiced by, you know, working the comp time. But it is intended to be alternate time off in lieu of paying overtime.
And let me just mention the reason I want to see a limit of something. It's not because of any intent and how we know people, it's, you have to think of the worst-case scenario when you're making a rule, an ordinance, you know, a handbook. And what I observed directly, all right, in another state, we don't do stuff that, like that here, I'm sure, California, but in another state, was this unused comp time at the ending of employment should be paid at straight time based on employee's current hourly rate at the time of termination, not at the time that it was earned. Meaning that people would get increases in pay at the end of their pensionable period, all right? Raising up their overall hourly rate, never budgeted at all in terms of a pensionable liability. And you would end up with, and then it gets, it's pensionable, the payment, because it's time, you know? Some of the rules in some, in some states make it pensionable.
Yeah.
The payment of unused comp time. And people end up gaming the system where their retirement pay after they retire is, it was higher than they were ever getting in a paycheck over their entire working life.
Yeah, the other thing...
I mean, I'm just saying, you know, you just...
You're right.
You just have to...
So I don't think staff has any objection to putting in the cap.
So I'm looking for something.
It would just be, but if it did a bad, disadvantage, you're trying to come up with something on the fly.
Well, could we, could we maybe take it under advisement and come back with a subsequent amendment to add that cap in here? I think that would probably be better than trying to think of a number because I think that's a very, you're absolutely, absolutely right with what you said because I've seen it. So, and I understand.
You've both seen this.
Absolutely.
I understand the concern. Yeah, definitely.
I just want to add this to the, to the dialogue if I can. What's the benefit of comp, of comp time? What, what's the win for me as an employee of comp time versus time and a half versus actually getting compensated for additional work?
So the policy was began several years ago with the idea of trying to rein in the city's finances. And so therefore, the determination was made that we wouldn't be paying overtime out and instead we would be paying the comp time. So again, the idea is you're trying to get the employee to take future time off in lieu of getting an extra payment on their paycheck. So that was the idea, was to try to reduce the city's costs. I, I have some questions about the efficacy of it and how well it's working. And I'd be more than, I mean, quite frankly, it's been one of those things I've been thinking about. Don't really have my thoughts together tonight, but if it's something that council is interested in, I'd be more than happy to look into it further and perhaps come back with some type of recommendation to modify the, the current policy. Obviously, it has fiscal impact to the budget. We need to look at that too.
Well, I would enjoy that. Plus, I'd like to know what the comp time is for all of our employees up to date. If there's a record of this.
Absolutely.
I think it'd be interesting to see and maybe there might be a record from last year and the year before and the year before that.
I could tell you what it is as of right now if I would go to my computer and look it up. So it wouldn't be a big deal.
I'm more than happy if you can bring it back. But I just think it's a concern. I just don't, I'm, I'm lost on it. And I, and I see the, I see the benefit to management and I see the benefit, the benefit to the budget. I just don't necessarily see the benefit to the employee.
The benefit to the employee is that they get to have, they get to have time off. And, and if it would have been paid out at time and a half or overtime, they would have, they would accrue time and a half as comp time. So for each, you know, hour of overtime that they worked, that would have been time and a half, they would get one and a half hours of comp time credited to their bank. So they're able to get that time where they theoretically can take time off later on, you know?
Mayor?
Yes?
Do you also have records of who have used their comp time? Okay.
Absolutely.
I would like that information. Or is that confident I heard?
I would suggest that this, that the Finance Director provide that in a summary format rather than an employee-by-employee listing because that would, if provided to the council, would become a public document. But I'm sure a summary could be prepared, perhaps by department, to provide, the information for the council to make the decision without violating employees' privacy rights.
Okay.
And if, if I could make one more comment while I hold the microphone. On the pension spiking concern, it is one of the concerns that we see other cities, other states. It becomes a problem because the payments at the end of the term are you, at the end of an employment term, inflate the final highest compensation, which inflates the pension. To some extent, that's reduced with PEPRA, the Public Employee Pension Reform Act, passed in January 1st, 2013, although that has a 20, 30-year time horizon to take full effect as employees are under the classic, quote, "classic employees" versus PEPRA employees. The one benefit though is that for future employees, the PEPRA employees, their pension is calculated based on the final three highest years. So it's harder to spike at the same level, but it is a concern to keep in mind. And one aspect that I've seen are other cities use to reduce that risk of the final budget hits is to put hard caps, as we're talking about, and to consider, as a management policy, as an employee reaches close to retirement age or is expected to reach retirement age, encourage the use of time in the, in the leave bank as opposed to just letting it accumulate as a cash asset.
What I think would probably be a beneficial thing is to change it to require a payout at the end of the fiscal year perhaps.
That was going to be my suggestion.
Because you're absolutely right. That is, I mean, you could have somebody, let's, let's say somebody starts off when they're 17 years old and they get some comp time and they retire at 65 and they're, they're making, you know, you know, instead of $10 an hour, they're making 50 bucks an hour. And yeah, it's, it's a huge issue. So I think that might be, that's something that we'll have some discussions and come back with a suggestion for council on that matter. I think it's, it's a very, very important thing to look at. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments so far?
Interrupted your narrative. I'm sorry.
No, I was pretty much, pretty much done with, those were the primary changes that we were looking at in, in the employee handbook here. And if some of the changes, like, like I said, if some of the changes were made for the 40-hour work, week positions, then the handbook should probably be revised a little bit further, you know, after this. And we can come back with that in a few weeks and make those, bring those changes to council.
Okay. You have more for us?
So that's the first item. The second item that we have, we have recommended that the, that the city adopt a 2% cost of living increase for all of the full-time employees and the trolley drivers. The, as stated, the parks and recreation part-time people received a, an adjustment in January of this last year. And so they've already been brought up to be in more market conditions and reflect the requirements of the minimum wage laws that have been inactive. And we will be, as the California $15-an-hour minimum wage is increasing, the rates are going to have to be adjusted as we move forward. But we have recommended that there be a 2% cost of living adjustment, which is right on with what the Los Angeles area inflation rate was when I looked at this a couple of months ago. 2% is what kind of we've given. Now, with regards to directors and the, with the management team, this 2% does not automatically adjust compensation. All that is being done with the directors and the recreation manager is to increase their possible range by 2%. And any compensation adjustments are based upon performance and evaluation by the city manager. So just to make sure this is not an automatic adjustment for any of us. It is strictly, you know, for the, for the rank-and-file employees, yes, it's, it would be a 2%. Now, our recommendation originally was to bring, to have that be effective on, on January, or excuse me, July 5th of 2016. Council has the option of retroing that back if they choose, if you choose to do so, to enact this or to make that effective at a different date. It's, it's up to the discretion of council on that matter.
Any thoughts on it?
I'm not sure. Well, let's quantify this. We're talking about retroactive back to June 1st.
July 5th.
July 5th. And it's currently September. The problem is you're asking us to authorize expenditure without really understanding the impact on the budget as a whole.
Well, my initial question was, was...
Not the microphone too. I repeat myself. The issue is the, you're asking us to approve retroactive, which is expenditure, without an update on the budget balance as a whole.
And my question was kind of related. Is that included in the, in the staff report? How much that would be if we were to do that?
No, the, oh, the total amount of the budget? I haven't looked at the staff report in a...
Are we still in balance?
Yes, we're in balance.
Including a retroactive?
Okay, so the, this entire cost of living adjustment was factored into the budget that was approved on July 12.
I wanted to make it clear.
Yes, thank you.
So it does not add additional expenditures to the...
I thought we had that, this previous discussion.
Yes.
Yeah.
I just want to make that also clear to the public that we're, this is built into the previous budget guidelines.
Absolutely. It's built into the budget and council decided that we, we passed the budget without any cost of living adjustments approved. So we have the spending authority, but not the, not any approval to, to give any adjustments there. So, yeah.
Any questions on that?
Nope.
All right, moving on.
Is this a discrete component we should move on before other items?
You know, I think it probably will be worth while to, should we move on to the other, the 40-hour work week? Or should we decide on these matters here first? Because they're not all inclusive.
Why don't we, why don't we take the issue of the employee handbook up first as far as the modifications? And I'll entertain a motion on that.
All right, well, I'll move that we pass a, to approve resolution in the city council, upgrading, updating and amending the salary schedule for management and non-management employees and updating the employee handbook contingent on a recommendation for comp time policy revision within 90 days.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Lara.
Yes.
Councilmember Haney.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wirik.
Yes.
Mayor Blatts.
Yes. All right, moving on.
Okay, the, the next item that we have is, over the, over several months period of time, council has been meeting in closed session to discuss the option of moving the standard employee work week to 40 hours a week. And it is, you know, so we're bringing it back to, we're bringing it here to council meeting for that to be discussed and to be acted upon. Some, the one of the, I don't, do you want to elaborate on that a little bit?
For purpose of clarity, right now, we have, or for a number of years, you know, for those who remember, city offices were open four days a week and the full-time staff worked four-day, 36-hour schedules. Five, six years ago, we started to transition to a five-day work week, five-day office hours. A lot of the employees have already made that transition over to the 40-hour work week. However, not all employees are on the 36-hour work week. So this would be to bring everybody to be at the same level, 40-hour work week. But again, with the option for the city manager to be able to designate specific employees to work a 980 schedule, which means you would work nine days over a two-week period, 80 hours over the two weeks. So it would still average out to 40 hours a week, but with the 980 schedule, they would, they would, they would have one day off in that 10 work a day cycle, if that makes sense.
All right. Any comments, questions? What's the pleasure of the council?
Well, I, I think that we have to, when we think about this, we think about the needs of the community. And we have heard from the community that it would be nice to have employees here five, five days a week. And I think that if our budget allows that, I would be in favor in allowing the city manager to designate the 980 for employees that want to exercise that option. I think it's important to add that level of service for, for our constituents. So I'd be for it. I would move to approve the 40-hour.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Laura, Councilmember Laura made a comment that, that brought something to mind. I did not discuss the cost of this. We have projected out the cost of doing, of going to a 40-hour work week for all employees. And the cost to the general fund is anticipated to be just under $100,000 a year. And the cost of the transit fund is anticipated to be slightly more than $18,000 a year. So there's a cost associated with this. One of the items that we have brought is a, a proposed budget adjustment that would be part of this, this action wherein we would be adjusting some of the, some of the, the... If this is approved, we would need this budget adjustment that we would increase the salaries and benefits cost throughout the general fund and the trolley fund. But we also are proposing a reduction in the budget for the contract service for plan check to, to help to offset some of that additional cost. And we're looking at different areas within the budget where we might be able to come up with some, some other items to be able to offset it. Because right now, I'm going to, we're going to have to come together with a few more items to be able to make this balance out.
How much more would we be going into the general fund if we were to implement the 40 hours a week?
Right now, with the adjustment that I have before us right now, we would need approximately $36,000 more of additional cost savings that we would have to find in other areas.
Okay, Mayor Protem Wirik?
There was talk of possible offsets in contract labor outside of trolley or, or outside of contract planning.
Correct.
Reductions that, that going to this schedule would be a reduction in contract need inside, say, for example, public works.
Yes.
Is that net or gross? Is that net or gross of that projection?
That has not been included in here because we have not been able to quantify exactly how much it would reduce, whether it would be able to reduce the entire contract services or whether it would reduce a portion of it. And so we're going to have to determine that.
So some of that thirty-six thousand might be offset by reduced contract employees.
That's correct.
Because we have our employees working more.
That is correct.
Okay.
Councilman Haney?
My only concern is that I keep hearing that you have to bring information back. So it sounds like we're not ready to make a decision because we can't make these decisions until we have all this information. Am I correct?
Well, I was going to recommend perhaps it might be good to have the finance director go through his entire presentation so they can give you the, the whole lay of the land here. Um, I think we were safe to take the action on the employee handbook, but I think it might be good to hear from Mr. Livingston on the bulk of his presentation because it may affect some of these decisions.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, actually, I've been spending most of, all, all day today looking at budget issues. Because one of the things is when we passed the budget on July twelfth, we knew that there were some additional costs added at that time. And so I've been working to make sure that everything, everything balances out in the, in the general funds first and then all of the other funds throughout the city. What I have, as I've been looking at this, I believe that there are, I, I have concerns on, on, one of, one of my biggest concerns is I do not ever want to, want to fund ongoing expenditures with one-time money. That's a major no-no, and that's what gets people in big-time trouble. And, and so, and I also like to be very conservative on my projections of revenue. So I'm, I'm very much against adjusting our revenues upward until I have some firm evidence that that is going to be a good number. I just think that is the major one, that's what gets cities in trouble. That's what gets businesses in trouble. So I think that, so I think the approach that we have to take is looking at reducing expenditures. There are a couple of items that we could do immediately and there, we have five, five positions that we've, we've added. We have, we have added the, the human resources risk management position. We've added the accountant position. We have added the maintenance worker two position. We have added a building, building and planning technician one position as a full-time basis. There's not as much savings in those. And we also have a current vacancy with the records manager position. However, that is being, any savings that we have on that position are being eaten up by, by our part-time.
Partially.
Part, partially, a part-time employee. What my thought on, on this is right now that we will have a minimum of one quarter of the year that will not be funded on those positions. And, and our immediate shortfall right now can be covered by adjusting those numbers downward, those budget numbers downward. I think we're very comfortable with, with that. And though, if we adjusted every single one of those down by, by a quarter, then we would, I don't remember the exact numbers, but the accountant was, is roughly twenty-five and I, roughly it'd be about a hundred thousand dollars for all of those positions to just recognize that we have, we won't be able to fill them. I mean, why, the recruitment for the accountant position closes October eleventh. So I'll be lucky if I have somebody in here by, by Thanksgiving, in all honesty. So I believe that that's where we will fund the current years. By the end of this fiscal year, we'll have a better idea on the contract labor issues. We'll have a better idea on the contract services for the, the building department. Because with the new contract in effect, I believe that we are going to see some savings in, in that area. We will have several items where I think we'll be able to tighten our belts along the way as, you know, as we do things. There, you know, as I indicated, we certainly don't want to solve any budget problems with one-time money, which is this, using these savings is a one-time measure. But if we believe that we can, we can sufficiently reduce ongoing expenditures by this and/or have revenues increase, I think that we're safe in, in doing this for this year.
Let me just throw out my thoughts for a minute. I am concerned that we're playing with all the money here, money there. We may save it here, we may save it there. We're just entering into a new contract. We don't know how that's going to impact. We have potentially, from what I see on this next agenda item, unallocated general fund reserve that we're looking at picking up on. I don't see why we just don't take a step back and let, relax over this and look to beginning it at the beginning of the next fiscal year when we know all the answers to this stuff. We're kind of throwing this into the middle of a fiscal year when our budget is kind of unsettled, in my opinion. So I'll just throw that out for the council's thought process.
If I could just add on that, a couple of things. I don't mean to cherry pick here on any particular thing in the budget, but I just, I think, kind of from the historical standpoint, when we went through the budget discussion and we talked about some of the, the, the optional areas for the council to fund, council actually exceeded a little bit beyond what we had recommended for that area, which we understand is council's prerogative to do. Nobody's shaking their finger at the members of the council for choosing how they want to spend the taxpayers' dollars. I want to make that perfectly clear. Only that it, from, from our perspective though, suddenly we were trying to scramble a little bit to try to make everything balance up here. And that's part of the reason why we're seeing that we have a little, a little bit of a hole right now, so.
Mayor Protim Wyrick?
Um, Mayor Blatts, I'm, I'm, I'm taking your words very seriously. And the tension all along has been the constant feedback we get from the community. I want someone there when I come in on Friday. You know, I want, you know, I work five days a week. I want City Hall to work five days a week. And we get a lot of that. On the other hand, your point's well taken. Sometimes you have a goal, you have another goal, you have another goal, and you have to look at spacing them out a little. And so I, I, I see what you're saying.
And I'm in no way saying that I'm minimizing the fact that I think we should go to the forty hours a week. I have no, and, and allowing you to do the, you know, the nine-eighty. I just, I feel uncomfortable moving forward with this with all of these variables, as you said. We, it seems like they have to come back to us anyway.
Right.
And, and then we're, we're shoving, we're, we're moving funds around here without really knowing whether we have those funds to move. That's my only point. Do you have a comment on that, Mr. Livingston?
Actually, you know, one of my gut concerns right now is that there are indications that the economy is, is slowing down a little bit. You, you look at different economists, you look at different things. The Fed's talking about, well, will we raise interest rates? Will we not raise interest rates? My, my biggest concern is, is that the tourist economy would slow down. And all of a sudden, we promised money that we were hoping that we were going to get from TOT and sales tax and, and other things and that that could slow down. I mean, typically, the government goes, you know, typically the governments lag when we hit into a recession slightly. But I think it would be prudent for us to keep in mind that we don't necessarily have an unending flow of, of money and at least at, at the same level, you know. And we're, part of what we've been doing over the last couple of years is trying to build up some reserves so that we could weather storms. And so what you're saying goes right along with that. There is uncertainty. You know, that we got a presidential election. How, what's going to happen to the economy after, after January? You know, we don't know. There's a lot of people that make guesses. I mean, you know, we, you know, economists, a lot of them see things different ways. And so you just kind of look at the gist and see what's happening. But I, the more I read out there, the more concern I just have on a gut level that we should be cautious. I don't see anything going down right now, but I just think caution is, is, is the better way to go right now.
I just wanted to add in somewhat a different direction. Understanding the concern in terms of the five-day-a-week service and the availability of staff, that's part of what we've tried to accomplish in this budget, which I think we are moving towards, regardless of whether we move towards the forty-hour or nine-eighty work week for all employees. We've added some positions that are going to be able to make it easier to serve the public. Having that additional full-time person for the, the planning and the building division. Having the additional accountant in the finance department. Having those additional positions will make it easier for us to be able to maintain the staffing levels that we currently are trying to meet right now through Monday through Friday. So we're going to see some improvements in that area, even if we don't see the increase in the, in the work week.
All right. Any other comments, questions, motion?
I'd like to, go ahead.
I, I just wondered, was wondering if Mr. Livingston was done with his presentation or not. Okay.
Yeah, I, I don't have anything else to add, but I'd be more than happy to answer questions.
Any questions, Mr. Livingston?
My comment is that all those extra positions that we're wanting to add, whether it be in the finance department or the HR specialists, where, I know you mentioned that you probably wouldn't have anybody here till probably Thanksgiving. Where do all the others stand? Because to me, that's important because I need to know, as Mayor Protim Wyrick said, that right now we do have a lack of staff in this building and we have, the workload is, there's a lot to do. So I, I guess some of my, my concern is, are we, are we getting closer to that point? Or will we have, we have a better understanding where the budget is once we get those positions filled?
Just so you know, those positions are included in the budget that was passed.
Yes.
So those are fully funded. So that won't, wouldn't impact anything. Now, just, so there's a couple of things that are impacting. First of all, I got, we got our, our front office person back this week. She's been out, out on, for about four months on, on maternity, you know, leave. So we're happy to have her back and just wonderful that they're there. So that helps to shore up our front desk thing. So we shouldn't have anybody coming in and saying, oh, well, nobody's here manning the front desk. Because they are there, they just happen not, maybe not to be there at the moment. The other thing is, okay, so we have the accountant recruitment ongoing right now. We have, there has been an offer extended and accepted to a person to take the, the, the building and planning technician one position. We are in the process of starting recruitments for, which, which ones we got ongoing, Steve, you know?
For the HR risk manager, we'll be working on getting that one out soon. We're still working to get the associate or assistant planner position filled. We do have a contract person who is working three days a week to help with the HR and some of the records management duties. And that's the other one that we need to get out is the, is the records manager. So we've got the accountant out and we've got the one position filled and we're going to begin the recruitment on the other ones very soon.
And the maintenance worker two is, as well, correct?
Correct, right. Yes, thank you.
So we're moving, we're moving along. It's not as happened as quickly as many of us would like, but it is moving and we're moving, we're going in the right direction.
So once those positions are filled, you'll be able to analyze the funds better and have a better idea of where we stand in terms of where the, if the budget's balanced or not?
Right now, the budget's balanced.
I think, I think the issue would be as we move forward and get these filled, as we start to wean off some of the contract planning and some of the other areas, how we see how the new contract is working with the building official, how that's tracking out.
So the, the concern here was more adding the forty hours a week to the rest of the positions that were working thirty-six hours.
It's a large run right now.
It's a large number.
Because that's an ongoing expense of about a hundred thousand dollars a year for the general fund.
Okay.
And, and without some of those, some, some of those reductions, we, you know, if we get, we get our, our planner on board, then that cuts down on more expensive contract planner time. So it's, it, that's exactly where the issues lie is, you know, we got the public works, we've got building, we've got some planning. We've got, you know, the, the records manager that are all being filled right now, some of those positions by, by contract employees, contract people.
Okay. I just want to understand what the main, the, the, the problem is in terms of balancing the budget.
Well, and the other issue that I will have is that by, as, you know, right now, I couldn't tell you where our revenues are going to end up. I couldn't even give you a good guess. We just haven't had enough time elapsed in the year. And sales tax numbers, we're barely getting, I think we'll be getting them this week, the sales tax numbers for June thirtieth. So we won't even have the first quarter sales tax numbers until, until right around in December. So those are the issues that impact whether we can make these kind of, that impact our ability to analyze where things are going. So, yeah, it just gives us more, more time to make more, to have more data to make better decisions. Yeah.
Mayor Protim Wyrick?
Just a short request, and I think it might mirror Mayor Laura's concerns, I mean, uh, excuse me, Councilman Laura's concerns. I don't, I think we, what we're trying is we want to get the recurring expenditure income more into focus before making this commitment. All I would ask as an individual councilperson is that when that does come into focus, we don't necessarily defer further discussion of this until the next fiscal year.
Absolutely.
That if, if this comes into focus over the winter, for example, or in the springtime, that this decision is somewhat maybe better done before we do budget development for the next fiscal year. So it becomes a parameter. And that's all I'm asking and requesting.
Yeah, I agree. Once we get things kind of moving along, you know, as, you know, I've been here a year, a little over a year and a half now. And as, as I'm getting more, you know, a thing of, of a routine going with, with my staff and everything, we get the accountant on board, my plan would be to bring updates to council on a regular basis, at least quarterly. And, you know, quarterly, hopefully, at least semi-annually. And I would anticipate coming back to council around the end of the calendar year or beginning of next calendar year with updates on where we are. Absolutely. That's, that's the ongoing plan.
What I would like, what I would like to see is the updates come back in the format that they came back in this agenda item. Meaning, we've, we have now filled this position, we've now filled this position, we've now filled this position. Here's where our sales tax revenues have been, here's where our TOT has been. And so that as we, as we update our information coming in and then also what savings we found because of these new positions that are going to be rolling out over the next few months, that'll give us a much better indication of whether or not we can really afford, whether, well, first of all, whether we have the money to do it as it's, as it was proposed to look at tonight or whether we have to look at another way of doing it. Because the main thing is we want to provide service to the public.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And, and Mayor Blatts, if I may, has that report come in from that contract agreement that we did about analyzing our revenues and our items, our budget?
The fee study.
The fee study, yes.
It has not, and I'm going to be on the phone with him tomorrow. It's in the, he's putting together the draft. I talked to him a couple, week or so ago. He's putting together a draft. We should have a draft within about a week, I believe.
Okay.
And once we get the draft, we'll circulate that to council and we'll circulate to the departments to make comments on it. And then we'll bring tide up. And hopefully, we'll get that all resolved and get the, the fee study, the fee schedule and the fees, fee schedule all adopted here within.
Because I'm imagining that would give us a better understanding of what our revenue will be or what, or where we're lacking in some areas and more depth on, on our fee schedule.
Yeah, I mean, the fees are, are based upon services. So if, if the services are, are happening or not happening, those, that impacts it. But we will know what our, what our rates are and where, you know, what we're, maybe we're, are missing or versus what we are, will be gaining if things maintain a status quo. Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Any other comments by council?
Are we winding up here or?
I think we are.
Then I just have three questions that I've, I just want, they're still open questions that don't need to be dealt with tonight. But I could, I just, you know, there's questions I've had on, open for a while now, all right? And the three are, at some point, we need to take up the PEG contract. I think there's some real issues with that. I, I understand we have that on hold and pending our discussion, which is fine. Number two, I still want to address this issue of the reimbursement from the police department, from the county sheriff on the position. It's supposed to be half-time, half-reimbursement, but it's not being reimbursed at half. And I'd like to know if that request has been made of the sheriff. That email, memorandum of understanding or email was many years old.
Yeah.
And I think the intent was fifty percent. And again, we're, we're not getting reimbursed at fifty percent for that position. And at least I'd like to know the status of the requests are possibly an element in, in the ultimate contract negotiations that we have yet to engage in with. in with the sheriff's department. And the third is the lack of, of, uh, you know, I've, we've, I've been through this, you know, and there was a sort of confusion about what was and was not approved by council in terms of budget adjustments in 215, 2015.
Yes.
And we're operating off the base
Mm-huh.
of 2015, but we don't know exactly what that base precisely is because of the lack of documentation for some of the budget adjustments that supposedly occurred. I'd still like some clarification on that.
Yeah. And I put together some documentation for that, so we can, we can, we can discuss that. Um, I, I wasn't, um, there, there's still one other item that I wanted to discuss with, with council. I wasn't totally what, going off of what we have here.
Actually, there's two.
There's two. I'm losing track here. Which one, we got the?
Well, we still have the issue with the, uh, whether council wants to give any direction on changing the compensation for city clerk and treasurer.
Yes.
There's also the city manager recommendation to allocate funds, recommended at $10,000 to conduct the space and needs assessment for Ojai City Hall. And we're recommending that that be a one, from a one-time repayment, that that be funded from the run, one-time repayment of the RDA loan to the city.
And there's one other item that came to my attention earlier, um, on Friday, and we sent a memo out to council members earlier today regarding that matter. Um, when we put together the CIP budget for this year, we made a change and moved all of the automo, the vehicles out of Fund 31 and made it a true capital projects fund, and we moved the vehicles into Fund 33. What we neglected to do was include the planned expenditures for the IT and the vehicles in the Fund 33 budget. And so, we would like to, um, to have a budget amendment to in- include those items. There are sufficient funds to cover those. We, we have a couple of vehicles that they're looking to purchase right away and we realized it weren't there. So, that, that's the other item. So, we have those three items.
Okay. Going back, okay, and we can take those up, you know, in due order. Um, but my, my concern is, uh, what Mayor Proton Wyrick said, there were still some questions that, that he had. But this is a, I don't want to lose sight of this item. And Mr. Summers, is there a way that we can have a, a continuing agenda item on every agenda, even if there's no action to be taken on it until such time as staff is prepared to do it? So, we have this budget discussion on every single agenda until we actually get to the point where we make a decision on it?
Yeah, you can include it on each agenda. It just has to be listed on each, each agenda.
And if there's, and if there's nothing further to advise the council of, that's fine. But at least it's there, so we see it.
Yeah.
Right. I agree.
Okay. So, I would like to do that.
Okay.
Just so I understand what specific idea.
Well, we're looking at, we're looking at how this, this, the year-to-date's gonna flow in, you know, in terms of revenues. We're looking at how we are going to, um, how we're gonna fill those positions. We're looking at what those new positions may have on our contract labor, all those kinds of things that are coming up, including some of the things that Mayor Proton Wyrick just said. And we can always have it put onto agenda when they're ready to address it. But I would like to see it on the agenda all the time, so that we don't have it as a new agenda item when they're ready to discuss it with us. It's always there and we can always ask them, "Okay, where are we on it?" So, we don't forget about it.
One approach might be to structure the default item as a, uh, update and discussion on, um, budget progress to date.
Mm-huh.
Which, that wouldn't allow you to take any action by itself, but as staff is ready for you to consider an action, they could amend the agenda item for each meeting. But at a minimum, you could get an update from staff and have a discussion of the budget and where the numbers are coming in as they come in.
Is that agreeable?
Yes.
Okay.
And the last thing I might, you might consider, in terms of just the admin burden on doing that weekly, or, uh, twice monthly?
No, we're not meeting weekly.
No, exactly. No, 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 no.
Well, we have.
I was gonna suggest that you might consider that to be a once-a-month item, not a twice-a-month item, but that's entirely up to the council.
It may, I-
Like that suggestion.
It, it-
I prefer it once a month.
Okay. Then let's do it once a month. Let's do it on the, uh, the second meeting of every month. Is that okay?
I, I, I just, I'd rather put it, uh, the timeframe on when we could talk about the PEG agreement, but that's just my preference. I mean, the majority of the council, they want it once a month, but I'd rather have some, some dates on it, rather than just seeing it every single or once a month. Uh, I, I, if there was, there's gonna be no action taken on it, then why have it on the agenda?
Well, be, the way that I see it is with it there, even if there's no action to take, we can ask why we don't have information. And when are we expecting to get the information?
Because we do, we do have a list of priorities. We do have a list of, of items. Um, I, I think this particular issues that we're, we're gonna be brought up when, once they figure out, um, when that's gonna happen, um, I, I trust staff will bring it to the attention of the council. We have these hard numbers. Um, that's my way of looking at it. I don't see why we should have it once a month. Um, but if the majority of the council wishes, I'm, I'm not opposed to it, but, um, I, I don't see why we should have it once a month.
Okay. Uh, Councilman Libraheany, do you have an opinion on it?
Well, my take is just the fact that, um, it's agendized, so that way, it's, it's something that we're not gonna lose track of. You know, like a lot of the other priorities that we defer. So-
I look at them every week, so.
So, so I'm in agreement on that. And, um, and again, we're looking for Rudy to give us an assessment. Could be two months from now, could be four months from now. So, um, whether we choose to discuss it on that, that evening is entirely up to us.
Right.
So, I'm 100% behind you on that.
Okay. Okay. Do you have a preference, whether it's the first meeting or the last?
No.
Okay.
Personally, I'd prefer it on the second, because later on this evening, I'd like to do the same thing with water. I'd like to put water as an agendized item every month, so that, uh, Councilman Wyrick and I can present something on an as-needed basis regarding, um, uh, water in the community and in the county.
All right. So, let's, uh, have that as an ongoing agenda item, second meeting of every month. Now-
And I'll offer a motion.
Okay.
Not that.
Yes.
But a motion on these other three items and see if
Okay.
colleagues go along with it. I'd offer a motion to approve the recommended, uh, schedules, um, for adjustments to CIP budget, numbers one through four, as presented, that the, um, compensation for city treasurer be, uh, changed to equal the city clerk, the existing city clerk compensation. And we approved allocating funds recommending $10,000 to conduct a space and needs assessment for Ojai City Hall from a one-time repayment of the RDA loan to the city.
Second. Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Councilmember Heaney?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Wyrick?
Yes.
Mayor Blatz?
Yes.
All right. Does that take care of everything on?
If I could just very quickly comment, I, I will be happy to come back to city council with a report on the PEG agreement. Let me get with my counterpart in the school district. I understand the concerns. We can come back with a report on where it is and what's happening, uh, along with the staff recommendation. So, uh, probably shouldn't take us too long to get to that.
Okay.
So, uh, and then on the other issue, we'll, we can get you a, um, if you want, a memo back on the issue with the clerical position at the sheriff's department. And then if council wants to agendize that for a discussion, we can certainly do that. Um, and on the budget adjustments, I think Mr. Livingston could probably prepare something that gave the details on that too.
Absolutely.
We could at least start with that and see if that, uh, addresses the council's questions and concerns.
Thank you.
One question I, I have, I just want to make clarification. Maybe I was just daydreaming or whatever. But on, or maybe, it was getting a little hot in here. Maybe I was, I just cranked the AC a little bit. Um, on the COLA, we did approve the COLA, and was that retro to July 5th?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Okay.
All right.
Staff has nothing further.
Anything else on, uh, item three? No? All right.
Cynthia Burrell, I live in the city. Uh, I have a question about the salary for the clerk and the treasurer. I thought, and I could not find it in the ordinance last, uh, time. I thought that salary was set by ordinance. It was years ago. Does that, and I think it is set by ordinance under a special ordinance. Does that not need to be handled that way?
I previously looked at this issue, and as I recall, government, the government code, and I forget the exact citation, but a provision in the government code allows the council to set the clerk and the treasurer's salary by ordinance or resolution. As I recall, a provision of the Ojai municipal code requires it to be set by ordinance, but that is preempted by the government code, which allows the council to set the tre- compensation either by resolution or ordinance. And
Oh.
For clarity, the, um, compensation adjustment takes effect after the next election for both positions.
Okay.
Or, well, here, the, there was only an adjustment to the treasurer's salary.
Right.
That takes effect after the next election.
So, so you're saying that what is in the municipal code in Ojai is the government, California government code, when did that happen?
The government code section issue has been in place for a number of years. I do not know when it was adopted off the top of my head.
Okay. Just, I just wanted to know. I thought, I mean, I stuck for years with the, and I remember the council wanting to adjust their salary and could not, and all, all of them were in the code at one time.
The rules for council salary are different.
Okay. I saw that in the code.
Yeah.
I wondered what happened, because it, it, years ago, it was in the city municipal code, the amount the city clerk and the city treasurer would, would get. And all of a sudden, the last meeting, I was looking in the code and I couldn't find it and saw it was set by special ordinance. So, I would be interested in finding when the government code.
Right. Uh, Madam Clerk's point is well-taken. If we act on, if we have a section of the code that spells out a salary, but the government code says we can do it by resolution, well, now we have a resolution that's in conflict with the code. Is there a way that we can, 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 in that, in that motion, also adjust that code section to reflect it? Or do we need to bring that back in a whole different fashion?
Adjusting the code does take an ordinance, so the motion would be direct staff to prepare and bring for introduction and adoption an ordinance reflecting the action.
Okay. And we do have plenty of time to do that in, in that it's not gonna take effect until after the election, correct?
Right. It wouldn't take effect until the, um, after the election and the new, the new positions are seated.
Okay.
Which in this case, for both positions, will be the same as the current position, but it's a new term.
Now, are we allowed to do that under, uh, under this agendized item?
Yes, because it would be setting the compensation which was listed as agenda item. So, I think you could do it. You could direct it staff, bring back an
An ordinance.
An ordinance amendment to accomplish
All right.
the compensation amounts of set.
Now, do we, do we need to do a motion for reconsideration of the prior motion? Or can we just amend it?
I would suggest just a separate motion would be cleanest.
Okay. All right. You want to make the motion?
Well, thank you, Mr. Summers, for clarifying.
Thank you for bringing that.
I wondered what happened to the ordinance. It just fell out of the book.
Yes, thank you for bringing that to our attention.
And, and just for the public record, I believe the numbers are, the clerk is 350 a month. The city treasurer, who's supposed to probably oversight of the entire investment portfolio of the city in consultation with the finance director, is 150 a month. So, we're not, you know, all we're doing is saying, "You know what? I think that the person who's elected to look over, uh, responsible to the public for the rec, the money of the city is as important as the person looking over the, uh, the records of the city." So, that's my spirit of my equalizing motion. And so, would you like to help me state the motion properly, Mr. Summers?
And, and so, and also let the record reflect that we're increasing the treasurer's salary from 150 to 350. Okay.
I would suggest phrasing the motion is, um, direct staff to bring back a draft ordinance for introduction and potential adoption that would amend the city code as required to reflect that the city treasurer's compensation shall be equal to the city clerk's compensation, which is presently $350 per month.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Councilmember Heaney?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Wyrick?
Yes.
Mayor Blatz?
Yes. Thank you again, Madam Clerk, for bringing that to our attention. Item number four, acquisition of vacant property at 205 Grand Avenue, assessor's parcel number 021-0-043-170. Mr. McClary?
Well, if you're eager to get out of here quickly, I have good news. If you're eager to get this moved along quickly, I don't have good news. We are recommending that we continue this item. Um, we are still working to be able to obtain a clean title report. At this point, we do not recommend going forward. Ask that we give staff a little further time to work through this title issue and hopefully get this back on for the October 11th regular meeting.
Okay.
In the, in the interest of moving along, could we approve, subject to city attorney's, uh, approval of said clean title report? So, we don't have to come back and agendize this again and be faced with continuations and et cetera.
Staff would not have any objection to that. I would refer to the city attorney, though, on whether or not that would get us in a bad spot or not.
I think you could do that. It would be fine. And the, what we would do is, if we can get a clean title report out of the title company, we proceed with the acquisition. And if we can't, and we've run that to the ground, then we'll come back to you with options.
So, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve, subject to the city attorney's satisfaction of clean title report.
Second. All right. I have some questions.
Sure.
Um, the money, th- this is $200,000, and it says, "In funds for the purchase of the land from unallocated general fund reserve, or identify an alternate appropriate funding source for the allocation." That language where you're saying it's gonna come out of here-
It can't go yet.
It's gonna come out of here, or it's gonna come out of here, troubles me a little bit. And the only reason it does is I want to be absolutely clear as to what our reserve funds are appropriately used for, unallocated general fund, reserve funds. And what do you have an idea for alternate appropriate funding source for the allocation?
Me? I thought I was gonna go home. Man, you caught me. Actually, there, there are a couple of options that we, we have. And one of those is that we could include that as, as a, out of the capital projects fund, um, in Fund 31, where we've, I think that's an appropriate place for such a, such a purchase and such an item. And what that would require is some shifting around of priorities like we do regularly anyways, and say, "Well, we're gonna do this project this year, we're not gonna do this project." It might happen that maybe we, maybe, you know, I'm throwing things out, and maybe we don't do the restrooms for $200,000 this year, and we buy our property for $250,000. Or maybe we cut back on some of the street projects that we have this year and postpone that into a, a subsequent year. I think that's one of the better ways that we would use to fund that. Uh, it, it just makes sense. It, it's also possible, then, you know, some of the future year repayments from the RDA loan, which is one-time money going for one-time pro, uh, items could be directed towards that as well. Those are my two recommendations that I would have.
Okay.
If I remember correctly, on the initial discussion of this, that was the funding source, was the one-time RDA loan.
Right. That's what I thought this, that's why when I saw this, I was a little concerned because it's $200,000. And that $200,000 can be used by the city in a number of different areas, including doing our roads, um, you just mentioned restrooms. And I just want to be absolutely sure in our discussions, and then we have a motion on the table, that the council is prepared to spend the $200,000 in the acquisition of the land versus using that money for something else. That's all. I'm, I'm just throwing it out there and, and because I want to be, I want to be clear that the council's direction is that we believe that the purchase of that land is more important than other things that we could be spending that money on. And I'm not real thrilled about taking money out of reserve. Okay?
And it-
Any comments on that?
Mayor Blatz, yeah, it's a good question. And I look at it as us making that decision, whether it's appropriate or not, not really staff. Uh, we have to see if there's value in purchasing this piece of land, um, be, and if there's value for the community. And the way I see it is, uh, there's absolutely value. So, if we were into our unreserved, um, general fund, I would have no issue with that because it, it's consistent with our general plan, open space, recreational, other public improvements. I look at that itself and I, I see it as, as an asset to the, to the city. So, that's why I had no issue. Um, I think it's, uh, I, I think it's money well spent.
May, can I make an amendment to my own motion?
Yeah, just would have to be accepted by the second.
Listening to Mayor Blatz, I'm gonna offer an amendment to my motion to delete, uh, while I, I do agree with council- while I, I do agree with councilperson Laura, I also think it's important not to do it from the reserve, that we delete from the unallocated general fund reserve, delete that language, and state the, from the, from Fund 31, or from RDA, an RDA fund. Is that the right way to say it?
Yeah. Might I make a suggestion here? I, I think what we probably want to do is have it out of Fund 31.
All right. And just leave it Fund 31.
And what we, what we could possibly do is move some of that loan proceed, the loan proceeds from, that we would receive, and actually use that to fund what we're doing in Fund 31.
Well, then I'm going to-
And I think that's the cleanest way of doing it.
Then my amended motion would be for the purchase of the land from Fund 31.
Just a question before, if, accepting that, those amendments, would that impact right now our, our current budget?
It, it would. What would have to happen, see, fund, the, the loan proceeds are not budgeted revenues for us. And so, what that does is it goes directly to our cash balances that we have available, you know, for, for the city, because it's, it's actually a loan on the books of the city. So, we bring it in as a loan repayment. What it would require is actually us moving some money. It, it would ultimately end up impacting reserves one way or another, I, I think, because it would, we would have to use that money out of reserves. It would be coming from there, and then it's, it would be moving one to one to one and getting it there ultimately. So, what we would have to do is we would have to bring in, we would have to recognize, I'll think this through, how we would do this.
We could also just, just reorder priorities in, in Fund 31.
Absolutely. And that's probably the best way to do it, and we can look at our future funding, what we want to do in that fund. I believe that is absolutely the best way to go about it.
Right. That's what I'm, that's my intent of my amendment.
And, and I have concerns about that, just because if we're going to be looking at what we want to fund and not, by, by accepting this motion, then we're already getting back into that whole unknown and, and variable that we had in, in the, the previous item about the uncertainty, the certainty of the budget. And it's going to be, to me, it creates more confusion to what the budget's already, you're proposing.
Yeah. The reason, the reason I would-
Ultimately, we are going to be allocating maybe some funds from the general.
Yeah. I mean, the general fund, if we have to take money from the general fund, it, you know, if we take it out of reserves, we'll have to bring it into revenues, and then we'll have to, then we'll have to expand it out. So, you know, it's a net wash, but it does reduce our reserves. However, Fund 31 is essentially a capital projects reserve for the city as well, for the general fund. And, and so, it's, it's one versus the other. The reason I'm more comfortable with the capital projects is because we have over $3 million budgeted in that fund right now. We are not going to be able to complete $3 million worth of projects in there. And, and I'm having some discussions with Mr. Grant right now on what we can and what we can't, because I noticed that there's a slight bit of a, a little bit of an imbalance in that fund as well right now. So, I'm trying to get, I'm working on cleaning that up. That's what I've been doing all afternoon today, and we'll continue with that tomorrow to be able to get some good numbers. But I, I think that's the better place where we would want to, I, I just think that's the appropriate place for us to do it as well, so.
Mayor. Hany?
Mayor, I think my, my only thoughts on this, and I want to, I don't want to slow the process down, is we're identifying, identifying, allocating funds from the Fund 31, and moving it over to make this purchase. Yet, we don't necessarily know how this purchase is going to impact or enhance anything in the community. Whereas, I'm sitting here, and I say that when I'm sitting here thinking that we're looking at 150,000, maybe 200, but closer to 150,000 to do the bowl renovation. And so, I just kind of watched that bowl renovation just float out into the ethers, and I think that that's a pretty important item. So, again, that, that goes back to what Mayor Blatts was talking about, is how are these funds going to impact what we do in the community? And, and again, I think about the, I know we have the Complete Streets project, and I know, I've had conversations with Mr. Grant regarding the S there on, on Montgomery and the impact that it has going north Montgomery. And so, I'm just not sure where this purchase plays into the big picture, other than it's land that's available, and it's, it's available to us at a pretty good cost.
I, I'll tell you what I'd like to do for a moment. This is a discussion item. I don't have any speakers cards, but we don't have a motion, a motion and a second on the table right now.
An amended motion that hasn't been seconded.
That's correct.
Right. Which means on the table is the original motion.
Right. But I can open it up for public discussion at this point, can't I?
Yeah. As the mayor, you have the power.
Okay. So, if you could have a seat, Mr. Livingston, I want to see if anybody in the audience has any comments on this.
Susa Francina. I'm very familiar with this property as probably everyone who walks that area up North Signal. I fully support, I was very excited when I saw that the city was thinking of purchasing the property. I can think of multiple uses for it, and I hope that it plays in, it'll, it'll enable us to finally make probably one of the most dangerous intersections for our school-aged children to negotiate. It'll help make it safer. I think that we'll have a lot more freedom, hopefully, what we can do with that intersection. It's a great piece of property. I, I fully support the purchase. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Quilisi?
Thank you, Mayor Steve Quilisi. I'm a resident of the city. I was sufficiently confused by the overhead photo of the property, that I went and got the Ventura County Tax Assessor Collector's parcel map, and much, and then went out and walked around the property. And much to my surprise, virtually none of 201 Grand is actually off to the side of the road anywhere. If you march 100 feet from 207, that is through 205 and 203, to reach the southeast corner of 201, which is city property, you are almost in the street. Virtually all of 201 is in the street, and there is property on the west side of Signal that looks to be street right-of-way that is currently being used as side yard by the, by the residents there and for parking. So, as it stands, 201 is in the street. 203, which is city property, is a park or something, and at the east edge of it, there's a concrete bench. I don't think that that is big enough to be useful as a park. And so, I would favor buying 205 to make a little bit more land available in that place. Whether we ever get any water to make it look green is a separate question. But the existing non-street, non-sidewalk land that's there, that belongs to the city, is quite small, and buying 205 would make it, I think, much more useful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Quilisi. All right. Yes, Mayor Protim Wyrick?
Well, I'm going to make my pitch for the, the big picture, and why I think this property's important and not to let it go. This particular parcel is critical. If we're ever going to have a proper east-west bike path through this area, that is part of our general plan, part of our circulation element, not on top of the issue with the, the S-curve realignment, and it, it really is important to be able to have a safe key, a key component of a proper east-west bike path there, coming off of Grand and going to Summer, which is where, for decades, the proposed path has been, and we finally need to implement that. And I want to, and if, if the taxes pass for the Ventura Transportation Plan, we are going to get funding for exactly this type of project if we have the land to do it. And then my third thing is, you've got a major stormwater retention capability there with all the, all the water coming down Signal that is right, you know, this, this, there's a, a real, we're talking about water, this is an opportunity for that kind of engineering. And just a little piece of green space next to a, a pretty dense multifamily area, a little place, you know, for people to, for kids to play in. So, I think the value, as, as councilperson Laura said there, I think it's, the value is there. It's been through planning commission. They endorsed it for a lot of reasons. So, I understand the concerns, but at the same time, I see this as being a, a series in a, a, a pretty much of a, of a long list of potential benefits, and that's why I think it's, it's worth it.
And, and I agree with Mayor Protim Wyrick. Where I, I add, where my concerns come in, as amended motion is stated, is that we're just going to be doing a bunch of shuffling and Fund 31, even though our, somehow, we might dive into our unallocated general fund reserves. We see the value of this. It's the prerogative of the council to define when it's appropriate to just dip into those funds for the, the value, if it's going to offer any value to community. Why not just keep it simple? The $200 just come out of there. It could potentially relieve what's already in Fund 31 and not convolute our budget. So, I, that's, that's my only concern, that's just purchase the property, and, and I think that's-
Well, here's, here's kind of my thinking. We have capital improvement projects in Fund, that are already in the budget in, in Fund 31. And those are pretty important projects, too, or we wouldn't have approved them. So, now what we're saying is, we're, we are going to look at, and we're not, we don't have all those projects before us, to say, okay, we're going to look at this and say, we're coming up with $200,000 of projects that we're not going to do. So, I think that we need to decide, if this is something that we really want to do, then I would say, then let's put the importance to it that we're willing to take the money out of our reserve fund to pay for it, and not monkey with Fund 31. I mean, that's the way I, I kind of see it.
And that would support Mayor Protim's first motion.
Which is the only one on the table.
Yeah. Which is the only one on the table right now. So, I would be for that.
So, that it's now going to be taken out of the reserve fund, correct?
Well, the original motion would be from the unallocated general fund reserve, or identify an alternate appropriate funding source for the allocation. That's the only motion on the table.
Okay.
Leave alone.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Any further discussion? All right.
Well, I just, I just have one quick comment. You know, I, I agree with Councilman Wyrick's statements. I agree with everything that, that staff's reported to me, or reported us. Like I said, I just question the fact, the, the benefit at this time of making a purchase, again, without actually knowing what we're going to do with it. We've sat on this corner lot for how many years? The original, 2001?
Actually, no. It just, it just was available for sale recently.
No, no, no. Not that, not the one that was for sale, but the one the city actually owns?
The city owns two lots next to this. Mr. Quilisi is correct. Signal Street-
201 and-
The city owns 201 and 203 South Grand, and also owns the right-of-way to the west of 201 South Grand.
Right.
Which is presently not where the road is. The road is mostly on 201 South Grand, and Signal Street, that is, is on 201 Grand. And so, there, there's a misalignment between the road and the right-of-way here. But the city does own where the road is.
Yeah. I, I just voice of my concern, that we're purchasing something without an intended goal in mind to actually utilize it, so we could make this purchase and we could be sitting on this land for the same amount of time that we've been, we've been sitting on this other parcel. That's all, that, that's my only argument, is I hope if we make this expenditure, that we move forward with something positive, and we do it sooner than later.
Okay. And I think that that's the point that, that I'm making, because we don't have a plan for this, but if we take it out of Fund 31, we do have a plan for $200,000 worth of capital improvements in there that are identified and approved. So, now we're looking at taking $200,000 to buy this, whereas I have, I have no issue with the fact that this is a nice piece of property to have, and it can be used for various things. It's just we don't have a concrete plan, as you say, as to what we're going to do with it. But, you know, it is available. I think that it is in the interest of the public, in the interest of our citizens, for us to buy it. I just don't want this to affect anything else that we've already approved.
So, so I'd just like to ask one, just one other thing. Let's get back to funding, the funding. You're saying the RDA is a one-time source of money, correct? And that money-
That is correct. There's an annual payment that we receive from the redevelopment, from the loan, from the redevelopment agency that the city made to the redevelopment agency.
And when that money comes in, where do you, where do you transfer it to? Where do you allocate it?
It's about $200,000. Right now, it is, it's going directly to the balance sheet, so it's not being, it's not being budgeted or hitting revenue in any one of the funds. So, it's actually increasing our cash reserves.
With the one exception of the allocation that we made tonight for the space and needs analysis of 10 grand.
So, I'd be, again, I, I'm for it. I don't want to be the person sitting here against it. I just think the funding source, if it's a one-time shot out of the RDA, I think that's what we should use. It just makes sense. And again, that's initially how this was brought to us. And, and I'm 100% behind that.
Would I suggest to amend the motion?
Yes, you may.
No, you would amend the motion.
No. Well, we want to make it that we-
I already tried once.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I, I would still suggest that we do, that we, however we, the funding source, we figure the funding source out, I still believe that it would be better to do that through Fund, in, in Fund 31, whether we put some reserve money into there, or however we do that, whatever we do. But I think that should be the fund that we're actually purchasing out of, rather than, than the city general fund. You know, we can use that money and move it in there. I just think that that's the purpose of what that, that fund is there for, rather than, we don't generally purchase properties and things out of the, out of the general-
So, are you going to earmark RDA funds to go back and for reimbursement into CIP?
If that's what council wants to do, we can certainly move that in there.
Exactly.
And that's the identified funding that this talks, that it talks about.
Yeah, that's very simple.
That's fine.
Yeah.
So, you're earmarking that. Does that have to be part of the-
No.
Of the motion?
Yeah. It's just, it's something that I want to make sure, I just want to make sure we're not just saying we're going to buy it out of general fund or wherever. I think that we just, we put it where, as the motion is, we, what available sources or however it's worded.
I would-
I want the proviso-
What? I would-
Uh, okay.
Okay. I, I just want the proviso that when we buy this property, it's not going to affect any of the previously approved capital fund expenditures that are in the current budget.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, to accomplish that goal, I would suggest that the motion direct, direct that staff make the necessary budget adjustments to you, to pay for this purchase-
Yeah.
-out of Fund 31, with the revenue source being the RDA loan repayment. It would make it very clear.
That's fine. Yes, we would prefer that.
I'll, I'll accept that as an amendment to the motion, if you will make that amendment.
Um, I was going to say so.
As stated.
As stated.
Okay. I accept it.
And the secondor?
Just a quick question on, on the RDA. We, do we know we have, we're going to receive those funds from the RDA?
Yes.
Yes, we do. Okay.
That's been approved, that was included in the ROPS that was filed and approved for this year. That's the one thing we are getting.
Okay. I just want to make sure, because the RDA funding has been all over the place.
We are not getting the administrative costs, but that is something, the loan repayment we are receiving. Yes.
Okay. So, I just want to make sure it's certain.
Yeah, that's a great question.
With that, then I will second it.
Okay. Any further discussion? No.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Lara?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wyrick?
Yes.
Mayor Blatts?
Yes.
All right.
Kind of like the Sterling thing, wasn't it?
Yeah.
All right. Is there anything else to come before the council this evening? Hearing nothing?
I, well, I did want to mention something to, to staff and probably our police department. There's been, I've been contacted by residents on Cuyahoga, on particularly right below south of Summer Street, that a kid on a bike got hit maybe a month ago. And it was basically like a hit-and-run, and I asked them if they reported police. They weren't, they weren't sure who it was, they just saw that the kid was hit. And, and they've been reporting a lot of speeding down Cuyahoga between Summer and Aliso. So I don't know if there's something that we could do. And also, the, I guess the bike lady said that there was another student hit on Summer Street, but there was no injuries there, and, and I guess the person who hit the student made sure that everything was okay. But I just, I'm alerting the police department, and maybe our staff, just to make sure that maybe there should be some more police presence there during school hours.
I do know that we have received complaints on Cuyahoga. We had a speed survey completed, and we're going to do another one to compare, you know, what, to find out exactly what the issue is. The first speed survey we did actually had the sign where it posts what the speed limit is. Some of the concerns is that the people feel that if they see the sign, they're automatically gonna slow down, and that's not gonna give you a true speed of what the vehicles are doing. So we're, we're in the plans of conducting another survey to identify exactly what the problem is and at what time during the day.
Okay.
Reference, though, the accidents, reported accidents. I review all the traffic accident reports. I haven't, I don't recall seeing one where a pedestrian was, a child was hit on a bicycle, but I could look into it for you if you want. But again, I'm not familiar with that, that accident.
Yeah, well, I'm just bringing it to your attention, 'cause that's, that's what they told me, so I'm just-
Anything?
Any, anything else?
Yes, my quickest, my quick, my quick assessment of Cuyahoga Street, too, is it is extremely fast. That's a fast street in this community. I'd have no problem parking a spare police patrol car there, you know, on a full-time basis. It is fast, incredibly fast, that street. The other thing I wanted to bring up was that I'm agendizing water on a monthly basis, which will allow us to bring, upgrade our flow charts of where we are from the reservoir, as well as some more information from, you might bring in stuff from OBGMA regarding groundwater.
Yeah.
But it just allows us an opportunity at a council meeting to keep water in the forefront of this community versus, again, as, oh, as we need it to come up.
Okay. So- Is there a consensus to do that? Should that be at the beginning of every agenda?
And could it be handled just by city council reports?
It could be.
Councilmember reports?
It could, it could be, but again, we're gonna be bringing some more flow charts. I want to bring some guest speakers in.
I would, sorry to interrupt. I would suggest that if the goal is to have it be, regularly be individuals more than just the council members, that you put it as perhaps a recurring item, update on current water situation and drought compliance, something like that.
Mm-hmm.
Such that council member comments remains a time for the council members alone to comment.
And could it alternate with the updated budget?
Yes, that's what I-
That would be very reasonable.
We don't have them out the same evening.
Right. So we'll put that on the first meeting of every month.
Great.
Okay?
Agreed.
Anything else from the council? Madam Clerk, do you have anything for us?
No.
Okay.